Good evening. This is the call to order for the Special Board of Alderman Meeting at the Solado Municipal Building, 301 North Stagecoach Road in Solado, Texas, September 30th, 2025, time is 6:30 PM. Mr. Del Rosso, please call the roll.
Mayor, all members of present, you have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Please pray with me. For Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for another day in Solado, Texas, Lord, and we just feel very fortunate to live in a community such as ours. Lord, we just ask that you just guide our minds tonight and help us work through this as a governing body, also with the community, and just open everybody's hearts and minds to what's being said and to have mutual respect for one another. And Lord, we just ask that you continue to bless the folks down in Kirk County that are still dealing with this flood recovery, and this extra special blessing on the folks that are down there. They're still recovering human remains and things of that nature, and just ask that you touch their hearts and their minds tonight, Lord, and give them some comfort. And we thank the ones that are down there and volunteering their time to do these things. And Lord, we just ask you to be with us tonight, and again, just guide us and point us in the right direction. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in salute to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Item one is public comments. The Board of Alderman welcomes comments from citizens on issues and items of concern not on the agenda. Those wishing to speak must sign in before the meeting begins and observe a five-minute time limit when addressing the board. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak during this time period. Speakers desiring to speak on an agenda item will be allowed to speak when the agenda item is called. Inquiries about matters not listed on the agenda will either be directed to staff or placed on a future agenda for Alderman consideration. First up, we've got Ms. Pam Hollingsworth. Okay, we'll come back to you. Lynette Jones, please. Well, can you come up to the...
We are concerned about any fundraising activities that we have and how that might affect what you're planning, how that may affect us. For, not only do we raise money, not for ourselves, but for all the other nonprofits that we give to. And so, I'm not really sure, you know, what all is on the agenda, but we are concerned about that. So, thanks, Pam.
Lynette.
I thought I would wait till I got it good to speak, so I don't know if this is the correct time to do this, as far as, is that okay?
Hold on. When you approach the podium, can you please state your name and address for record?
Sorry, sorry. Lynette Jones, address two, 6314 Bo Allen Court, Solado, Texas. Is that it? Okay. So, I don't know whether I'm speaking at the right time. Should I wait till the agenda, or is the public comments okay?
If you want us to engage with you, you want to talk about the agenda item, then you need to wait till that agenda item.
Well, I didn't know. Nobody said that that's what I needed to do, so. So, I'm just to speak on the agenda item then. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Donifer, you've got a check here that you want to speak during citizen comments, and that you want to speak about the specific agenda item. Is that correct?
Charles Donifer, 9891 Live Oak, Solado, Texas, and my wife and I also on the antique rows on Main Street. This will be a pretty short swing. What I wanted to talk about was vendors and taxes and fees. I mean, Solado has rules, what's supposed to be collected, and a lot of the vendors are not obliged by the rules. When they can do that, that means someone else is toting the tax loaf. And that's inherently unfair, because the city needs X amount of dollars to operate. We need a level playing field and enforced. And it would be very easy to get those vendors in line. You find two or three of them, put them with a pretty stiff fine, and they talk to each other. They would all get their paperwork in order and get with the program. The enforcement would be easy. City's losing a lot of money there. They really are. The other thing I wanted to talk about was events. Okay, y'all have events, please. They don't even come near to compensate the city for the police work that is done for these big events, especially when there's a lot of alcohol involved. That should not be a burden of the city. These event makers should pay a fee based on numbers and traumatic police required for your safety. They're getting a free lunch off the city, and me as a taxpayer. And it just, everybody needs a level playing field. And the last thing I wanted to talk about is concerns of board and passports. Many are businessmen, many are not. Sometimes there's conflicts of interest, and a member won't recluse himself. That's unconscionable. And, you know, when is the conflict of interest and the other members of the board feel about that? They need to get that guy in the corner and talk to him, you know, say, you can vote. That's all I got. And actually, the board here considered the mess they were dropped into when they were elected, they were doing a pretty damn good job. So, I'm not complaining about the work they're doing. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. That's all the sign-in sheets I have for just the open public comments, but if anybody else wants to get up and speak, I'll allow that. All right. Item two, workshop. Proposed ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance numbers 2018 tag 08, 2017 tag 12, 2015 tag 01, and 2011 tag 05, regulating itinerant vendors, peddlers, and mobile food vendors and providing permit fees. Mr. Del Rosso, you want to kick this off?
Mayor Alderman, what's being presented to you is a single ordinance. Let me make it very clear. This is a single ordinance that repeals four prior ordinances. Ordinances that were passed back in 2011, 2015, 2017, 2018. So, they were all merged into this one document. Many, for example, special events, goes back to 2011, pull up the ordinance. It's on the website. Just didn't have procedures, and it didn't have a fee structure for it. So, again, it's a consolidation of four previous ordinances. There was really nothing new added into this. Even the wordsmithing matches the legalese, and it matches what was in there previously. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and take public comments on this now, for people that want to speak about this specific agenda item. Mr. Donifer, did you want to speak again on this agenda item specifically? Mr. Donifer? Yeah, sir? You signed up twice to speak. Do you want to speak again on this agenda item, or are you okay? Yes, sir? Okay. And Ms. Turnbow? When you approach the podium, please state your name and your address, please. I'm just saying that for the general public.
I'm Bev Turnbow and live at 349 College Hill Drive in Solado. I am speaking tonight to ask that you vote against the proposed ordinance requiring permit fees for special events hosted by businesses, excuse me, and nonprofits where it's more than 50 to 200 people for the purpose of fundraising, the sale of goods, or events that collect a fee from participants. As reported by Tim Plaucher in The Village Voice on August 14th, 2025, Solado's 2025 sales taxes have increased by 17.26% over the 2024 sales tax revenue. Property taxes are also going up, and that provides even more revenue for the village. And yet, you want even more money by proposing an ordinance which imposes special permit fees for gatherings of only 50 people. If this section of the proposed ordinance passes, you'll be penalizing some of the very businesses that have helped Solado grow and have provided the needed sales tax revenue. It's kind of a double whammy for businesses. You want them to attract a large number of people through the venues and events, and yet, if they do, then they have to pay for having, for even having those gatherings. For nonprofits, it would mean that every time we have a fundraiser of a gathering of over 50 people, we have to get a permit, even though gatherings like the Scottish Festival, the Solado Ladies Community League, Christmas and October Gathering, and the Solado Historical Society Tour of Homes all bring in the heads and beds that fill the village of Solado's pocket with hotel tax revenues. House Bill 3262 amended the Texas Mass Gatherings Act in 2024. It defines a mass gathering as any event attended by more than 2,500 people and is held on public or private property, with the exception of certain interlocal agreements between a municipality and a county. Imposing a fee for gatherings of 50 people is government overreach and imposes a financial and paperwork burden and nightmare for Solado's businesses and nonprofits. I recommend that this body adhere to the Texas legislative definition of a mass gathering and implement a regulation that doesn't penalize Solado's businesses and nonprofits and eliminate the special events fee for 50 to 200 people. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Turnbow, this ordinance has nothing to do with mass gatherings.
I'm sorry?
This ordinance has zero to do with mass gatherings.
Yes, it does.
It has nothing to do with mass gatherings.
With nonprofits?
With mass gatherings.
The mass gathering, when you start mentioning 50 to 200 people, you're assigning a definition of a gathering. That is a definition of a gathering.
Yes, ma'am. You just quoted state law, said that state law specifies that a gathering of 2,000 people or more is a mass. We're not talking about mass gatherings here.
This law, the proposed ordinance, by effect, by having, mentioning 50 people to 200 people for special events, which is a gathering, however you want to couch it, is a gathering, and it should not be implemented in this particular ordinance.
Okay. That's all that signed up to speak on this agenda item, but we'll allow other folks to get up and speak if you'd like to.
Lynette Jones, 6314 Bo Allen Court, Solado, Texas. And I am also the director of the museum in Solado. I have been since January of 2023. When I came onboard to the museum, I was very green at what I'm doing, so I've had to learn a lot. One thing that I have done, I feel like that has been very beneficial to the museum and to the community, is try to bring more awareness to the museum and to the history of Solado. The reason I got on the board, which is where I started out on the board for the museum, was when I found out that Main Street was the Chisen Trail, which is actually not exactly what it is, the Texas cattle drive came through Solado in the 1800s, and the history of Solado with the Robertson family that came here in 1854 to settle Solado. At the edge of the frontier, we were the edge of the frontier. Past us was pretty much wild. So, this was settled very early in Texas history. But anyway, I regressed with that. But with the museum, I have had a passion to bring more awareness to the museum. By the way I've tried to do that is to let people find out about it, have meetings there, have weddings there, have anniversaries there, have birthday parties there. It's a lot of work, and we don't make a lot of money, because we ask for donations. We're strictly nonprofit. We don't have any other income except for the gracious $10,000 that the city has given us for the last two years, which has helped us a lot. We still like to get our elevator maybe someday. But I bring these people in so that they can see what we have. It's a fabulous space, and that's usually everybody's response. Didn't even know this was here. Had no idea. I've lived in Solado 30 years, and I didn't even know this was here. The museum's been here since 1959. The space, the added space was built in the early 80s to give an opportunity to, they planned to have the Scottish Gathering just in the museum and on the street in front, but it's grown well beyond that. And this year, we actually have 48 clans and societies coming this year, which is the most we've ever had. I've worked really hard to try to get these. Just this year alone, I've had 50 events of some type at the museum. Of those 50, not all of them had more than 50 people, but at least, I've counted about 27 of them had a very much of a potential to have 50 people there. So, in addition to all the other things I try to do for the museum, now I have to make sure that the people come and get a permit that's going to cost them another $100. And the reason we are attractive is that we don't charge a lot. We ask for donations only, so it makes it affordable to people, and they can come in and have their, whatever it is, birthday parties, wedding showers, baby showers. We just had a retirement party for a retiring general in the Army. And, oh my gosh, people absolutely loved it. I had so many people come up to me, talk about, wow, this is really a special place. He could have afforded the $100. He could have paid the $100 fee, but probably somebody else couldn't do that, or for whatever reason. Plus, these are just normal, everyday people. Like I say, I've been doing this almost three years now. Never had an issue with anything. I've had people have to not come because they know there's not enough parking, and that is a big issue, especially when there's five bars within 50 yards of me. And that's okay. I'm not have a problem with that. But it does create a traffic congestion. So, there's people that can't use us on the weekends, or, you know, when there's a lot of things going on, because there's not enough parking. And I tell them that. I even tell them that. Got a wedding on Halloween of all times, and I told her, I said, look, there's probably not going to be parking down there. She said, you know what? We'll just all stay at Stagecoach. I don't know how many people is going to be there, but they're having a wedding at the museum on Halloween. So, I get to spend my Halloween, have the museum hosting a wedding, and they're going to all stay at the Stagecoach, so I don't have to worry about parking. So, just have to kind of work it all out. But the $100 permit for a birthday party, when it's only going to cost them, like I said, we suggest a $50 an hour donation to the museum for an event. Even the coffees with the mayor, there could be 50 people there. We set up about 50 chairs every time. Is that a special event? I don't know. And like I say, all these other events of act and school had their back-to-school program there. Probably was more than 50 people there. They may be able to afford it, and that's fine. But to me, it's a community space, and for me to have to go to these, all of these people next year, because I'm getting to where we have more and more people come on every week basis, just was asked today if there's a kayaking group. Because of Belora shutting down possibly next week, the kayak group can't, doesn't have a place to go, so they want to come to Solado and come to the creek. Just found that out today. That's next weekend. So, if this permit is in, or this ordinance is in place, can't do it, not 30 days in advance. So, we tell those 60 kayakers, don't come. I don't know. So, that's my thoughts on how it'll affect me. And like I say, again, I'm a 20-hour-a-week person, because that's really all the museum can afford to pay. And then we have an office manager that is less than full-time as well, although we work full-time a lot of times. But the manpower to enforce all of this, to me, is a little bit asking, a little bit too much. Need to have a question for me?
Thank you. Go ahead. You can.
Ma'am, can you please come back to the podium? My mayor didn't look at me when I was trying to get his attention.
I love what the museum does. I really do. I want to touch on something that you said real quick as a comment. In paraphrase, you said it's a purely gathering place, but at $50 an hour, recommended suggested donation place. Do you ever give away that stage to free?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I'm good with that answer. In addition to when you talked about when the mayor has his, in theory, coffee with leadership, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm pretty familiar with that, the type of business. I want to recommend doing that a few years ago. So, with that being stated, is the museum currently a community partner with the village when it comes to events in that interest?
Because of the structure that was put in place before I came, yes. The museum actually gets the donation from the chamber, plus some electricity bills and part of the insurance that they pay us. The village in turn pays the Chamber Commerce. So, and in that, those two transactions, the Chamber Commerce has use of the facility, the village has use of the facility, yes, and they do not pay for any of those uses. The chamber has about 12 luncheon learns a year. So far, we've had, you know, eight to 10 of the coffee with the leadership, along with a few other things that the village does or the chamber does, yes, at no charge, other than whatever they pay us through the agreement that we have.
Understood. The reason I brought that part up, particularly about the coffee with leadership and general terminology to that, because in simpler terms, because we are a partner in what we do for our community together on a few instances, I'm making the statement of, would we normally, would we be charged for that $50 for that hour if we were going to have the next coffee get together is what I'm making a statement. In other words, do you see that being a practical application of part of the conversation?
No, because that's, the agreement is between the Chamber Commerce. No, I'm not planning on charging the village or asking for the donation of that. Like I say, the village does donate.
I understand. And I just want to get clarity for the board on what your prior comment was about and how you're going to apply that. That's all. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. No other questions. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, mayor. No other questions. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Like, you don't know why we're here? We are, so. Anybody else? We're not talking about mass gatherings. We're talking about this ordinance. Yeah, vendors and permits and special events.
My name's James Stone. I'm from Temple, Texas. Twenty-six twenty Gun Club Road in Temple, Texas. I am the president of the Music Association of Central Texas. And since two thousand twenty-one, we have done a rather large festival in, at Barrel Brewing with Katie, and it's been very successful. We don't make a penny. We depend upon the vendors to pay for the bands and for the sound. I'm facing right now with you guys making a decision that makes, I mean, if I have to charge everybody an extra fifty bucks, I'm done. I can't do this next year. Can't do it anytime. On top of that, I'm taking all the risk. It's almost rained on us twice. And if it rains on us, I'm pretty much done. So we'll see how that goes. It's up to God, but in this particular case, I started in January booking bands. This is not something I start, whatever. And we've already spent money on some ads. I don't know how this is going to affect Katie. She's already done contract with the TV station. She's, because we're a nonprofit, she gets twice the ads. Is that going to go away? I don't have the manpower. I can barely make sure that all the vendors are out there and that everybody's safe and everything else and put all the bands together and all the rest of that to police every single one of these, although we do contact every single one of them. But the main thing is, since two thousand twenty-one, we started with three thousand dollars. We still have three thousand dollars. And so we don't make any money. It's just the labor of love. I did send all of you guys an email. I never got a response from any one of you. I don't know whether you were expecting me to be here and that it's an opportunity to talk. And one other thing, you know, the amount of revenue that we bring in in sales tax and all the rest of the other stuff. Has anybody really sat down and gone over the last four years? I'm a businessman. I run my own business, run many businesses over the years, rather large ones, twenty-five million dollars a year kind of company. Anyway, what kind of revenue do you expect to make off of this? What are your costs? And then what do you suppose revenue loss might be in sales tax and things like that? I think you have some history over the last four or five years. And if you haven't done that, probably not really prepared to make a decision yet, I would think. I mean, if I was your boss, that's what I would say to you. Somebody go do a study. But bottom line is, if you do make a decision, we've already gotten permission to do the festival this year. I would like your word that we can continue to do the festival on November first. Seeing as how it's the last day of September and I got one more month before this, very stressful. I have no idea why I became the president of the thing, but things happen. So, and if not, I need really to know tonight because I got to shut it down. I can't. So it's done. I will tell you, been very successful. And maybe this is not what you want, or what, we literally shut down traffic on the, on, on this south end of town during the festival. All the businesses around appreciate what we've been doing for them. So I hope that's what we were trying to do to help. We're not doing it for our own. If, if you guys accept some risk, I mean, one of the things is even if we do charge all of them and we could do that, which is impossible, there's not enough money. What risk do you guys take? Did everybody get their fees back? I mean, I can understand, you know, the hundred dollar one. There's some vendors. Look, there are some vendors, I'm sure. When I read your, the whole thing, it clearly stated the problem was vendors that were getting out of hand, showing up at somebody's yard or parking in their parking lot and didn't say anything, didn't go anywhere, messing with the other businesses that are in that area and stuff like that. And absolutely, you should crack down on that. But this is on private property in a controlled environment, not hurting anybody. You know, there should be some kind of, with the other lady, I'm just asking. I mean, for nonprofits and things along those lines that are not really making any money at this, I don't see why the city should make any money at it. There should be some kind of, something for nonprofits. Thank you.
So you asked a question. Have we done a, looked into what the lost sales tax revenue was on vendors?
Yeah.
The simple answer to that is we have no idea, because we have no, we have no idea who's doing business in our community. And this ordinance fixes that. These ordinances that we're talking about, there's already four ordinances out there that say the exact same thing that this one ordinance says.
You have given us permission every single year.
Do what?
You've given us permission every single year. I'd say if this was our first year, you got a point, but I've been doing this for four years.
My question, you asked a question, have we done a survey on how much tax revenue we're losing with the vendors? The answer is no, because we don't know who the vendors are that are coming here, so we have no way to ascertain any of that. So this is not us trying to generate new revenue. This twenty-five dollar vendor fee for the year, by the way, not for the day, for the year.
I saw a hundred dollars and fifty dollars for the day.
That's for special events.
Well, I'm sorry, there's probably two thousand people there.
Hold on, listen, I'll let you speak. Now I'm speaking. We can have a back and forth, but let's be respectful of one another. The, for a special event, the vendor's not the one that's going to have to pay that, that permit fee. That's the property owner. And any, any other, you look around in neighboring municipalities, they charge fees for having special events, because there are things that tie into that. Police, we have to increase police coverage, whatever the case may be. We want to know who's coming in here. We want to know who's doing business. We get their tax ID so that we can collect sales tax on that. And it doesn't matter what sales tax we collect.
I have no trouble with you.
From one brick and mortar or another, just because we are already collecting revenue, we should stop seeking other, any other revenue? This is not paying the bills. All, the only thing this does, these vendor fees, is pay for the time that it would take our permit clerk to touch these applications and process them and go about it, go about it the right way.
Okay, here's, I appreciate that. Reality is that we cannot do this festival if we have to collect an extra fifty bucks a piece for each one of these people. There are seventy-five vendors last year. Right now, we're at about fifty-eight.
I don't, fifty bucks?
Multiply it out.
Fifty bucks from who? Who are you talking about?
Each vendor. That's what your ordinance says.
Where does it say that?
I don't have it with me.
For a special event, we're charging fifty dollars for each vendor?
Yeah.
The vendor, the vendor permit fee is for the vendor to come in for the whole year.
That was a hundred dollars, right?
No, the, the permit fees are twenty-five dollars for the year.
And that's for the year, right? Yeah, well, if I have to go back to all of those people and ask them for another hundred dollars, I'd make, well, I can't, I can't do this.
Well, we're not trying to create a hardship for anybody, and if something's already, already been scheduled out and planned and those kind of things, then we're not, we're not trying to trip anybody up. But that's why we're here to have these conversations.
I, I appreciate that. So are you saying it's okay for us to do this on November first and please?
That's not what I'm saying, because we're not, we're not discussing that tonight. We're not discussing that specific event tonight. We're here to talk about this ordinance. Now, whenever it comes time to talk about that event and what you want to do, to my knowledge, this has not come before the board for approval, correct?
I've talked to your, your people at the permit, and we're fine. We've been doing this. This is our fifth year. According to the. I really don't have a problem with you guys knowing who these people are and getting sales tax from them. That business is happening here in Salado. They should be paying sales tax to the city of Salado and not to wherever city that belongs. I appreciate that. And they should be registered with you and everything, but you haven't enforced it, haven't done anything up until this point. And when I talked to your, I forgot the young lady's name. I have her written down at home. But she said, we're fine for, for this year, but she also said this was happening and who knows? So that was my last conversation with her less than a month ago. Probably two-thirds of them. Probably two-thirds of them for just this event. Yeah, if it, if it was like ten bucks or fifteen bucks, I could probably swing that, you know? And we probably charge too much. I'm getting, I have somebody who helps me with it. She gets ten dollars a piece. And I'm asking seventy-five of the vendors, and it's mostly because of advertising and everything else that we're doing to bring people in into Salado. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, if you're going to do something before November first, because your ordinance does say that it is immediate once you vote on it. I need to know when or the other. Soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for your patience. I wanted to go back and ask you about the amount of people y'all bring into Salado on your event. And I think I heard you say somewhere in the vicinity of a couple of thousand over the span of the weekend.
It's hard to tell. It is all day long. So during the course of the day, I would think that a lot of people come for a couple hours and then they go. Last year, there was storms on both sides of this. Have a little prayer. I don't know how it happened, but it was a gorgeous day all day long, but I'm sure it affected a lot of the traffic. This year, it looks like it's going to be beautiful and clear, and so we expect a little bit more. How many actually come? It's just, we aren't charging. It's free to the public. I mean, that's one of the reasons we can't afford to do anything and knowing that we don't make any money at this, so. And, you know, a lot of towns have their, you know, music series and all the rest of the other stuff. We're basically doing that for, for free in this. I can tell you that Katie has a wonderful day that day, as far as it may be a better indication of. One of your better days, is it not? Yeah, overall.
Okay, as president of the association, y'all do these events around the state of Texas? Or is it just one annual event?
Well, we are planning possibly in two thousand twenty-seven. And I will say that every town a little bit different. Temple's horrible. Mess that they just went through. Belton is about the only one that talks to us. And we did have, two years ago, Village of Salado got truly, helped support us and sponsored us. But we weren't able to do that for the last two years, unfortunately. But, but we do jams and meetings, and we do those in different cities all over central Texas. This is, by the way, this is all central Texas musicians. They are not. And this is like our one place, because cities hire people from, they don't hire locals. I don't know why. But this is the one place where everybody is within what you, what we consider central Texas, which is like maybe from north of Waco down to north of, or south of Waco. That's north of Waco, to, to basically north of Austin and, and around. So, so that's kind of what makes it special. But we do a big singer-songwriter contest. Some of the winners are playing at this particular thing. We did that at Texas Music Cafe last Monday. And, and then we are working on the Levick Foundation and City of Belton wants to work with us so that we'll probably do a ten-series event. They're much smaller, much less risky, things like that. If we can't do this in Salado anymore, that's probably where we're going to head. But I would love to continue doing this, even though by the time October rolls around, I think I'm, I have, I'm surprised I have any hair left. You got a lot of it, so anyway.
Is, is this proposal that this village is talking about now much different than any other place that you have canvassed to take this business? It is?
Yeah, I mean.
In what way? The fees?
Yes, just the fees.
Is the, is the hospitality or the?
Back down Wake, we, before we came to Salado, we were doing, you know, right in front of the Hippodrome and walking off the street. You know, and Temple used to be cool. A very good friend of mine, Uncle Brian, there, used to do something out in the middle of the street. And they put so many fees and so many requirements in, nobody can do anything anymore on your own. And he charged, you know, people to get in. Yeah, we're just trying to, supposed to be a music friendly city.
We've marketed that.
Nice to feel friendly.
I appreciate you answering those questions, and I appreciate what you've done for us in the past.
Thank you. And, and again, if we're going to do something before November first, please let me, soon as possible. With who? No, Richard Paul, Richard Paul Thomas a little bit, but no, Katie, no, okay. That's who we started with, and that's, we're good partners. Guess I need to introduce myself. No, I've mostly been with Richard Paul Thomas. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Five-five-five, Haste Park Road, Jessica Greenfield. First of all, there's a lot of people back there that are still highly confused what we're even discussing. Are we discussing permit fees, vendors, or are we discussing music and having music at our place? So are we talking special events or are we talking vendors and peddlers and permit?
All of those, all of those.
Well, I saw it, but that's why I asked a question. So also special events? Okay. That's what I want to, I just want to stick with vendors right now. Okay. It's under my understanding that we want a permit fee so we know who's in town. Correct. And we know who's in town so that they pay a sales tax. Correct. Because everyone else who's selling here is paying a sales tax. Everyone who's got a brick and mortar and we're running our business, we're paying a sales tax. I get that these vendors bring people in town. I get that. Love having people in town, love the support. But what I don't think people see is some of these vendors take away from other business owners. Absolutely, one hundred percent. I have seen it. I've experienced it in my business. So as a business owner, if they are going to come to town, I think it's only fair that they pay a sales tax too. Because not only am I paying sales tax, but I was just up here with Gina earlier and telling her, I do everything in my power to stay in compliance, and a lot of it costs me thousands upon thousands of dollars to stay in compliance and not break any rules. Yet, people are coming in town and taking away my business and not having to follow any rules. So that's how I see it. I want people to come in town. I don't. I don't have a problem with vendors. I don't have any of that. But if I have to comply, why do they not? Because believe it or not, they do take away a lot of my business, hands down. If something's going on on that side of the town, it stays on that side of the town, period. I've even had vendors set up a, not even a block away from my shop, selling coffee and hot cocoa. One of my biggest sellers in the winter. And we noticed that year, thousands of dollars we lost because that vendor was there. But they didn't have to register. They didn't have to pay sales tax. They didn't have to do anything. And I also get it for the nonprofit that you want to bring nonprofit in here and get donations, but you're taking away from your local businesses, period. You are. I've witnessed it. I just spent thousands of dollars paying this alcohol ordinance that came up to me randomly that I didn't even know about. Someone came and delivered, the chief came and delivered it to me. I didn't want to be out of compliance, so I immediately came up here. How can I start paying this? I know other business owners, they did pay it, still were in operation. Yet I was paying it, paid over thousands of dollars for it. Now Texas legislation, I don't have to pay it anymore. So they got away without paying that fee, but I didn't because I'm going to stay compliant and do what I need to do. And if you've walked into my business, business is not good for me right now. We are struggling. I have to borrow money to pay the city, to be compliant with the city. But yet we want people who don't even live here or who have roots here not pay $25 a year? Just so we can know that they're here and pay sales tax? That might be unpopular opinion with all y'all. But as a business owner who's hurting and doing everything to stay compliant and spending thousands of dollars to do so, and then y'all bring in vendors that takes away my business, I have a problem with that. And I hope y'all hear that right now.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm John Rampy, R A M P E. I live at 1325 Roaring Way in Salado. And I had a couple of questions about what is an event? They don't write the definition. But one thing that I had a question about, my wife and I belong to a Salado United Methodist. And obviously it's a very church going town. The churches all put on events. You know, we put on a Easter egg hunt. We put on the trunk retreat. And we have a donation jar out at all of these. So I'm sure a lot of the churches do. Is that a special event under this ordinance and if not, why not?
I don't believe under this ordinance that that is a church for one. Like people have asked the question too about, well, if you have a church service, you're going to have more than 200 people there. Are they going to have to pay for an event? But no, because they congregate. It's a community.
But if I meant, the trunk retreat, for example, it's not, it is church sponsored, but it's a secular event. You know, it's not a church event. Similarly, the Salado Community Choir Concert, which are quite wonderful. They actively solicit donations there. They are held at the Baptist Church, but it's not a church event. And there are millions of people going to those. So I understand the need for traffic and that kind of thing. It's not a special.
But for the truck retreat, are you raising funds?
Yeah, we have a donation.
Are, is it, is it a, an event that is geared specifically towards a fundraiser?
No.
The answer is no, it's not a special event.
Okay. I guess my question is, are you going to draw that bright line? And what's the lack in the community choir? Wonderful events they all are. And they're actively fundraising. Yes, they're a concert, but that's where they get a lot of their money. So I think what I would ask, and should go into this, is start thinking about some of those, you know, where do you draw that bright line? Because I'm not necessarily sure that bright line is there. That's my question and comment.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Katie Hill, 1221 Baines. I sent an email last week listing out all of the issues I had with the ordinance. I hope y'all received it. I brought it to give to the secretary for tonight. I think, and I said this last, at the last meeting too, you've made great strides, improvements. And I think you're getting, going in the right direction. But I have issues and in that email, I put the text in red. And I'd like to go over it tonight, I guess, just to start the conversation. The definition of special event, as previously mentioned, I think it needs work. And Will, you know, really said it well last time, how if it's not in this ordinance, you know, you can't, you're picking winners and losers if it's not in black and white here. That can be a dangerous thing. And I think the definition of the special event, I think you need to remove private property from that. And as Mr. Rampy just said, private property includes businesses, religious property, events like the pizza festival, trunk or treat, the pumpkin fundraisers, maybe even movie nights at Table Rock and fall festivals at the school. These are all, you know, these aren't public property. These aren't village owned property. These aren't public parks. So, and that's where I think other municipalities are putting, you know, event rules into place. It's within the property that the village or the municipalities own. And in that case, that makes sense. But when it's out of business or a private property, someone's home, it, to me, it doesn't make sense. The other item is about the sales and use tax permit. There's some duplication of effort there. And one of the other citizens tonight, you know, brought it up kind of. It's redundant to have the vendor submitting their information and then having, if it's under a special event, having that special event organizer also submit that business's information after the event. It's creating more work for them and for the village employees. And so there's, there are two ways to go about this in my mind. Either just have the vendors be responsible for that. Or if those vendors are invited or participating in a special event, you know, make it so that that special event covers all of the vendors. And then you have one list, one point of contact for the village employee that's going through this. And it just streamlines the entire process, in my opinion. That redundancy is just a waste of time for your employees too. And then, under, I think it's under other authorities, item E dot B. It talks about renewal applications and having the sales and use tax reports from previous year's sales be submitted with renewal applications. Y'all don't make brick and mortars submit their sales and use tax to you every year or whenever they need something from you. And I, I don't think that's fair. I think it's intrusive and, you know, if you have proof that they're paying it, you don't need the exact numbers. So I don't think that that's a good thing. I hate to see a Salado shooting itself in the foot. There's a balance and a fine line. And I think, I think we're getting to it between attracting tourists. We're a tourist driven economy here right now. And, you know, managing the public safety of, of the town. And I think that you don't, I don't, I don't think you want to overstep and ruin a good thing. So do y'all have any questions for me or about the list of typos I submitted to you last week?
Yeah, let me, I want to speak on that.
Yeah.
So when we, this goes to the attorneys and we look through these things. One, this is a draft document. So you can expect a certain amount of typos in there. We're not going to spend the time to go through there and look at all these and go word for word. This is just for us to have conversations. Now, the attorney did say, I'm going to go through this and look for typos and that kind of thing. Or you want a clean copy now or you want to wait until this thing passes? We don't know what it is going to pass or not. No one up here has got a, I don't have a clear head about what we're going to do about this because I don't walk in the door with that. So that's why there's typos in here. Like I felt that was honestly, like you're just splitting hairs at that point. I felt kind of condescending, to be honest with you.
Oh, no.
I'm just telling you, you asked a question and yeah, it's in there. And to point out typos, that's not, I don't think that was conducive to a productive conversation.
Oh, I do.
Because I don't care about typos. I care more about what the, what the message is in this ordinance and what it lays out and what the rules are. But we can have, there's never going to be a perfect document. We're all human. Human, human hands have touched this, human eyes have looked at it. We're going to miss something. So I get it, going through all these things. But some of the things you pointed out are also in the 2015 ordinance and in the other ordinances.
Which hasn't been enforced, which hasn't been enforced. And so that brings me to another point.
Which is putting us in the situation that we're in now. Things have not been enforced for so long. Now we're going to, and I said this when I was running for mayor. I'm going to, we're going to put some things in place and we're going to enforce it. And everybody was, great, Bert, do that. And now we're doing it, they're upset. We've had that conversation.
Yes, we have. And going back to the typos, I apologize if that came off as condescending. I come from a very literal household. And if there's a typo, it can lead to misunderstandings. And so when I have been attending these alderman meetings for the last 12 years, no one's ever said, oh, that's a draft, we'll fix the typo later. When I was on the P and Z, no one ever said, oh, that's a draft, you know? And so I, I apologize. I never expected that answer from you. But I, I bring this to you humbly and with concern. Every single line in this document, it can lead to misunderstandings. Do y'all have any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What, thank you, Katie. Would you take me back through your sales tax discussion again?
Sure. Towards the end of the ordinance draft, there's an item, capital E dot lowercase b.
One more.
I think it's under other authorities.
Okay.
So there it's requiring that itinerant vendors or maybe it's mobile food trucks or both, submit their, when they're submitting a renewal application to be able to come back after their first year or whatever, it says that they have to submit their prior year's sales tax numbers, which is the dollar amount. And I think it's fair to request proof that you paid, you know, you went to the comptroller's website and you have proof of payment. But I don't think it's right to request that specific number be provided in the renewal application.
Okay. Then would you go back to the redundancy issue on the permitting and what you were talking about?
Yes.
In the process of back and forth.
Yes. So when an itinerant vendor applies, they have to give their business name, sales and use tax ID. That's all great. But then if that vendor is there under the umbrella of a special event, that special event organizer has, I think it's three to five days to submit the list of businesses or vendors that were there and their sales and use tax numbers again to the village. So the village is receiving that information on the front end and the back end. And to me, that feels like a redundancy that just creates more work for the village employee. And it would make sense either to choose one or one of those options or if those vendors are coming to Salado under a special event, have that organizer from the get-go submitting those names and tax IDs.
Okay. Then on food vendors, what was your issue on the, on the, if you had one on the food vendors?
Oh, yes. That's under B, other authorities.
Okay.
So the way it's written right now, the way I read it, I think it's the plain language, is that the village of Salado would have to inspect the food trucks menus, quote, indicating that such goods meet minimum food standards through the inspection of the menu. And that's not really realistic. Food trucks change their menus. And the Bell County Health Department doesn't inspect menus. It's not part of their, like of restaurants or food trucks. It's not part of their process. And so my question is, you know, is who's qualified to do this? Or is, it just doesn't seem necessary, like use the tools that are already in place? Yeah.
Okay.
Is that it?
I think that language about the, about the menu, Mr. Del Rosso, you can chime in on this if you'd like, sir. But the way I view it is to what Ms. Greenfield just said. If you have people coming in here, vendors that have the same exact, are selling the same product that you do, to know this, well, why do we need another coffee vendor coming here when we've got some amazing coffee shops there? We have vendors that come in here, aside from the food stuff, that want to sell their goods here. And like Texas 28, they're, they're an authorized distributor for Berlobo and all these other, I think, hey dudes and whatever else. And then you get a vendor that comes into town and they're selling the exact same thing. And they're even, they're even against what the distributor sets that they can do. So that's why these questions are in there about, well, what's, what are you selling? What's your menu? Because we have, if you got, you're coming in here having burgers or you're doing, you know, street tacos like at Lucy's, you're going to detract from there or you're going to detract from whatever other, other restaurant around town that sells the same thing. So it is taking business away from our, our brick and mortar.
When I opened Happy Pizza Company in 2018, a fine member of our community railed at me because I was taking business away from another pizza operation in town. And it, that's business. When it comes to licensing agreements, like Berlobo, you know, that's between those companies. And I don't believe the village currently has the ability to enforce or know all of those rules. When it comes to coffee, the village just approved a Starbucks. So that's, that's rough too. Like.
North into town off of the interstate, it's going to catch interstate traffic.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just, is it the city? Is it the village's business to regulate business? Maybe I'm saying that wrong. Are you going to say there can be no more coffee establishments in town? I, I don't, I don't agree with what Lynn said. Jessica, that's terrible, but.
Hold on. Hold on, hold on. Ms. Hill, you direct your comments up there.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So, did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I hope, I hope my comments help. I really didn't mean to be condescending when I sent this. And I, I hope y'all are able to do good for our village.
Thank you.
You have to speak up, man. I do. Well, I'm a half deaf in this here. I'll go talk a little bit. And I dove all weekend, so I can't.
Robert Daniel, 600 Prairie Dell Church Road, Salado. I do, I'm a mobile food use vendor. I've done several events here in Salado. Always had my, got my permit. Been up here and said that I didn't have to give it before for some events like. I've been up here and said that I didn't have to give it before for some events like stroll, other things that have been waived for us. And I'm assuming that all of them were waived for everybody on that. But what I wanted to say is just that when we do require to get a permit, we do get our permits. You can go back and look at your tax records. I've always, when I've done business here in Salado, I've always paid the taxes here in Salado. So, and I'm sure y'all have y'all's ways of going back and looking at that. But as far as that goes, the permit fees here have never been out of, out of whack for me. You know, I think it, I don't know if it's still that way, $100 a year, $50 every six months? Is what it used to be. $2.50 a year, which is fine. And that's good, it'll be good for a year if my understanding of the state law is correct, coming up. So, it will go into effect in, in next July. Saying that we have to get a state permit now and cities cannot charge anymore for, for that.
Yes, sir.
Correct. I just wanted to see on that, so. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that not everybody's coming in here. A lot of us that do come in here as mobile food units, we do pay our taxes here as required. I can't speak for everybody, but I can say that we do all that. And also, as, as far as Katie was saying about the redundant, a lot of the events I go to in Austin and other, other places, mainly Austin, Ludoville, Round Rock, those areas, where we are doing an event where somebody's putting it on, we have to, we pay the person putting the event on and they take care of getting all the permits and the fees and all that stuff. And I think that's what you were conveying to me earlier. And we don't have to deal with the cities on that. They take care of all that for us. And that's how most of those places are done, as far as that goes. And then, they just get a permit and we have to tell, and we have to tell, give them our tax ID numbers. We have to give them all that information. And they are responsible for sending it on to whoever needs to go volunteer themselves.
Sure.
No. As, as far as I know, yeah. On there, yes. And also, you know, other things that I do here, like weddings. I come in, I do a wedding, I'm gone. And I do quite a few weddings here. I do pay the taxes and they pay for it. So, I'm just, you know, you know, not everybody that does that on catered events or they, or those guys are going to have to get a permit for every wedding, thing like that that goes on in Salado. I mean, there's a lot of them that happen and there's a lot of people that, and a lot of those guys are one in, then gone. So, that's no thing. Anyway. Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. So, as a vendor coming in here, do, do you under, we can't really measure anything off of the prior three ordinances because we really didn't do, quite frankly, it appears a very good job of enforcement or consistency. Is that a fair statement?
That's fair.
And that's one thing that bothers me about whatever we decide to do is I, I don't like to spend our time up here making rules and then not enforcing them. But that's for a later discussion in this, in this event. But you know that exists, do you not?
Yeah, it would.
Okay. Do you, do you find that the city of villages of Salado is receptive to you when you come here to, to do an event, or is that not a fair question?
They've always been receptive.
Okay. Do you make a deal when you come here with a property owner to say, "May I be on your property and do this?"
We have to give it better than we have to give to you from the owner saying that we're going to be on their property and that these are, that's what these, and so forth.
Okay. And I, and do you do that prior to the event, month, days, weeks, months in advance? Or you, you're not asked every time for that, are you?
No.
The $250 a year is not excessive for you in that respect for an annual permit fee?
If I were doing, if I were doing business here every day or multiple times a year, you would not be.
So, under your current operation and your usage of the village, is that a fair price, in your opinion, for an annual permit?
If, if, for an annual?
Mm-hmm. Is that what we're talking about, Mayor? Yes.
I mean, would I pay it? Yes, I would pay it if I, if I needed to. Would I be happy about it? No, I would not be happy about it, but I'd pay it. But like I said, that's even going to be redundant after this, after July anyway.
Because the state's going to step in and they stated that's going to be the right. No more, it can be less, or it's just fixed.
They say that it's, it's, no more than 100, that you cannot put, charge basically anything.
Cannot exceed 250.
Cannot exceed 150.
But you can do less if you wish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's 150, I would.
No, they're, when the state, that takes effect July 1st of 2026. The state of Texas will be issuing permits for mobile, for food trucks and that sort of thing.
And, and.
It keeps, we can't at that point.
At that point, they can't do it.
And the fee structure is set by the state.
Yeah, we pay the state.
That's the irony of it, is that the state has, even though this legislation has passed, there aren't even any plans. They have no idea how they're going to do this.
Exactly.
So, they have until May.
We don't even know what we're going to pay for the state permit.
They have May, until May the 1st of 2026 to get their stuff together.
Exactly.
And then, effective July 1, once that's in place, if they get it in place.
Okay.
We've dealt with this before where they said that there was some new rules that were coming out and they would have this done by a certain date and it didn't happen.
So, we're, we're just saying we're basically matching what we expect the maximum to be, but we, we will review that probably and see where we are, or we can, we're.
Yeah, that, that part of it will go away in a year, less than a year.
Mayor, remember, I gave you a copy of that statute? It says that if the mobile food vendor gets a state issue, then it doesn't have to get one from the city. So, remember, we had a conversation about the Scottish Gathering last year. Ms. Jones stated that there were three or so vendors coming in from out of state. So, what happens if they're going to go to Austin or? That's why we, that's why that statute's written, if they get it, then the city's down. So, it's not necessarily that your ordinance will go away.
Right. So, if they, if they did not get a permit from the state, then we can enforce it on our end and make them, make them pay for the permit.
And we, that's, that will be determined prior to the date of the event, early in the event?
Yeah.
Yeah. When, okay.
It wouldn't matter then because I'd be operating in the neighborhood anyway. Because you have to get it, you're going to, if you're going to do, be a mobile food vendor in Texas, you are going to have to get a state permit. Yes. And as far as, I, I've set up a lot of venues and things like that. And I know the concerns about the local, local business owners and I have a business, my, my business is in, in Belt and that's my brick and mortar is. And I have a pizza shop and then a block away from me, I've got a pizza shop. And two blocks away from me, I've got a pizza shop. And one block away from me, I've got a pizza shop. Okay? And, you know, the thing is, is customers are going to go where customers want to go, whether it's a brick and mortar, whether it's a mobile food unit, or whatever.
But you have to have a property approval, a property owner approval letter to, on the front end to do that and verified by the city?
Sure.
Okay. No. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jessica Greenfield, 145 Cressida Drive. What I meant when I said up here, I don't, I get business is business. I did. It's not about competition. I don't care about that. What I care about is them following the rules. If I have to follow the rules, they have to follow the rules. I don't care if there's a coffee truck that comes in town. I don't care if there's a sandwich truck that comes in town. I don't care if there's an alcohol truck that comes in town. I get what you're saying, Katie. Business is business. But what I'm saying is, if I have to comply, so should they. Period. Fair is fair. And I feel like all the business in this town, whether you're a vendor or not, if I have to comply, so should all the other businesses. Because the way things have been going right now, things haven't been enforced and some businesses are paying certain permit fees or alcohol fees over here and some are not. And I've experienced that firsthand. I don't have extras of thousands of dollars. A lot of what I do, I borrow from my dad so that I'm in compliance with the village. And then, I find out over here that this venue, they're not paying it and they're still in operation. That's where I have a problem. I just want an even, fair, playing field, whether you're a brick or mortar or whether you're a vendor. Period. Fair is fair. Business is business, but fair is fair.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi there. My name is Will Hearn. I live at 7933 Shiny Top Ranch Lane, which means I'm outside of the limits. So, I don't like what you say, I can't vote, so no worries, right? I'm the executive director for Table Rock Amphitheater. And I was hired to lead a major renovation and revitalization effort there. And I don't want to say too much for, say something out of ignorance. But eventually, we would love to be doing about 100 events per year. So, I guess my question is, Table Rock's a nonprofit. Is, all we do is put on special events. That's, that's, that's our business. We would bid upon on events. We haven't been doing that much, but again, that's why I was hired to, to turn that around. And, and I hope to get 50 events pretty, pretty quick and 100 within a few years. So, that's really my question. I don't want to make too much comment beyond that. I don't want to say something out of ignorance, but is everything that Table Rock does going to be considered a special event? Because that's, that'll be, you know, if I get to 100 events, I, the way I'm reading the ordinance, I could be wrong, but I mean, that'd be $100 per event. And then, I think it would be $50 at more if I have any sort of other vendor on the property. I think that's correct if I, if I'm, if I'm not. And we do like to, we are, you know, toying with and bringing in, you know, multiple vendors, food trucks, things like that at events. So, we could easily get into a situation where we're a nonprofit venue that's not supposed to be taxed on our events, now paying $25,000 in event fees per year to put on 100 events between ones that we present versus ones where people come in and rent and they're putting on the event. That's definitely part of the business plan there. But so, that's really my question is, are we, as that nonprofit venue only producing events, do we, are we now under that ordinance if it passes?
No. This ordinance wouldn't apply to you because you are in business to hold events.
Okay.
It's part of your business model.
Great.
So, does that answer your question?
That answers my question. So, I didn't say anything stupid.
Now, as far as the food vendors coming in and food trucks, they're going to have to pay a permit.
So, they would?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you won't have to pull a special event permit because you are, you're in business to hold events.
Sure.
And other businesses around churches, they're, they're, they're there to congregate and have their, have worship. And schools are there to have, you know, charge a special event permit for a football game? No. So, that thing is there for that.
Sure.
Where the special event thing, things outside of the normal operation of your business is what that, what that would entail.
Okay. Great. Well, that clears that up. I will make comment also as a business owner of a production company that produces events all the time. It is, it's very expensive to put on events. And I understand you want to level the, I mean, the idea is to really make sure we're getting people on, on the tax docket here. I think that's, that's great. Everybody should be, should be adhering to those, those regulations, those laws and abiding by those. But just bear in mind, it is very expensive to produce any event, wherever you do it. And there's just so many fees and things that pop up when you produce events. And it's just one more thing. If we want to just make sure they're just complying with the taxes, let's, let's get them registered. Let's fine them for not being registered. Make sure that they're getting compliant. I know there's also issues with prior ordinances not being enforced and those things probably were already on the books. But just, you know, bear in mind that as nonprofit or for-profit, it is very expensive and very risky to put on any event. And we're putting on these events to, yes, make a living, but also bring, everybody here wants to see Salado thrive and grow. And we want to bring people in to, to help that and, and bring in all this revenue. But just bear in mind, you know, that maybe there's another way to make, get that revenue and get these people compliant without having to force just a little bit extra fees on every event and every venue owner. But I do think people should get compliant and they should pay their, their sales tax. That, that is something that needs to get under control. People aren't doing that. But that's all I'd say. Thank you. If you have anything for me, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Item three, discussion and possible action. Discussion and possible action on approving an ordinance of the village of Salado, Texas, repealing and replacing ordinances numbered 2018, tag 08, 2017, tag 12, 2015, tag 01, and 2011, tag 05, regulating itinerant vendors, peddlers, and mobile food vendors and providing permit fees, findings of fact, penalties effective date, repealer, severability clause, and proper notice and meeting. Mr. Delarosa, do you have anything else you want to add to this?
No, sir.
Okay. Alderman Sandor, do you have any questions?
I do. I don't hear that there's an issue with $100 necessarily. I think in some cases, there could be. I do hear, I continue to hear that people have concern with the language. They continue to have concern with the language in here. And I think we heard a lot of really good ideas and comments tonight. I, I don't hear a lot of concern with, I think, I'm sorry. I think I hear more of a concern with the special event part of this ordinance rather than all of the food vendor items, which we could kick the food vendor items back and forward. Guys, I've, through my wife's business, I had a, a mobile, mobile concession trailer. So, and, and we, we paid fees. They were minimal whenever we went places and participated. So, that's not foreign to me. But I think the special events part is the, the hang-up. And it certainly is for me. And I've expressed that to a number of people who have called me and I'm pretty sure I've expressed that to, to this board. So, I, I hope that we can consider some kind of language modification still. But with that said, we really need to conclude this business, in my opinion, sooner rather than later. So, this has been ongoing for some time. I, I do feel confident that we will never get the language perfect for everyone in this room. I don't, I don't think that that's going to be an opportunity. However, I, I do, I do believe there were some valid points. And so, Mr. Delarosa, how would we go about recording bits and pieces that we might want to modify in regard to the language as it reads currently today? In other words, if we get to a point where we're going to, and we're close to that now, where we're going to consider a vote? I, I guess I'm just too new at this to understand how we would. Is it possible that we could move forward and modify language? Or, gentlemen, should we consider a potential motion, perhaps excluding the special events line item because of the amount of? line item because of the amount of issues still being taken with the language? A lot of which I, I agree with.
Well, I think we can modify some language. We can add tonight.
Yeah.
Like, we can add stuff in.
And I think, and I understand the simple answer is yes, but like, I, I don't have a note, well, I have an email, of course, but I don't, I don't have a note on every single bit and piece that, that was mentioned tonight that I may or may not agree or disagree to. So I think my argument might be that we're very close with the exception of one, one bullet point, which is the special events part. There's so many people that just don't understand the language. And I know that you, Mayor, have tried many times to explain what is or is not relevant here. I think that the general argument is that it's not clear to the, to the people reading it who, who feel like they would be affected by it. And I, and I have some concern with that because I don't think that should be confusing. I think that it should be more clear. So.
So then the solution to that would be that we amend, we edit the, the language in there to setting something to the effect of if it's outside of your normal business operation. If you're a, whatever, a restaurant, and you're serving, you got, on a Friday night, you got 100 people at your restaurant, obviously you don't need a special event permit for that. They're part of your business model. Anything outside of your normal operation and what you, what you opened up to do and what your business is, outside of that, I think that, maybe that's, that's to be the language that would help clarify some of that. Am I wrong? Does that help with that? Yeah? Well, we've, we've been, we've been very accommodating of nonprofit organizations and even waiving fees. Whenever they, we had a, somebody wanted to do, they weren't even really a nonprofit. They wanted to have a, an event where they were raising money for somebody who had cancer or something, and we can charge a permit fee for that. So we, we have some discretion there, as, as what we do. And to Ms. Jones's point, she said that, you know, they, they could charge $50 an hour for, for the thing, that they don't, they don't do it for this business or, or for the village or whatever. So we, we have that discretion also to say, well, this is for this nonprofit, and there's gonna be a permit issued, but no fee. Or if it's just $1, just to make it transactional, so that we understand, these, these are the rules. This, this is what you're gonna buy by.
Yeah, I understand that. I think that, I think that some of the general public is looking for clarity on that. Let me try this differently. So if, if, Mr. Delarosa, if I may to you, if someone makes application for a special event, who approves that special event? Is there approval, or is it just a formality and a function of tracking what's going on? So first question is, who would approve that?
Well, we don't generally get them. That's been part of the issue.
Okay.
So, but if it would, it would eventually make it to my desk. So let's talk about fundraisers. Fundraisers are regulated by the State Comptroller's Office and the IRS, whether it's, I want to see three or any number of subcategories for nonprofits. So, for example, a church can have like four fundraisers a year, if I remember that correctly. If not, after your second fundraiser in a calendar year, you pay sales taxes. So I am pretty sure that I can spot some fundraisers that are occurring, that are exceeding those IRS requirements. So we don't generally get it, but then we also have, Mayor, you might recall, we've had rallies or bicycle runs, or marathons, blocking street, takes away from our police, we're getting complaints, we're running down the middle of the street, it's a hazard. So when you have a special event, your event, we have a certain amount of exposure liability, right? Because here's what some family members are gonna say, city, you haven't been enforcing it. We have a definition for a special event, but we don't have a fee or a process. And that, this goes back to 2011, 2015. So it's occurring more often, and that is certainly not part of somebody's business model. If you're in some part of town, you're either local retail, you're commercial, you're residential, but we don't have a venue for, like in Belton, where you can have a, some type of, or large gatherings like that. Okay? So if not well-regulated, the language has been entered. So it would eventually be signed off either by Executive Director Westpence or myself. Generally, I sign off on something like that at every other city that I've been at.
So the answer is that, generally speaking, you would be the person that would approve that? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So thank you. So then my next question in the same line would be, could you give me a hypothetical cause of why you might not approve one? And before you answer, let me paint a little different picture. Let's pretend that it's an event, it's a, it's a special event, perhaps it's been held in the past, and maybe they have metrics that suggest that they could draw up to 2,000 people. I, I'm just using a random number, okay? 2,000 people come to Celado. Some of those are Celadoans. The majority of them are probably not, given our population. So there's probably other business being had off of said event in Celado. Hotels are being used, other restaurants hopefully, and things like this. If you, if someone were to organize an event like that, and for some reason you didn't approve it, that could be a, a big problem, I would assume. I don't own, for the record, an event business, so I don't really know how to run one. But I feel like that, that could be a problem. So could you give me a hypothetical example of why you might not approve one?
No, sir. Generally, I wouldn't not approve one. Anytime we've gotten any type of request, for example, a Scottish gathering coming up, they don't talk to me first. I send them to the police chief. He coordinates that, whether we need police or fire, he'll take that. Once he tells me that we're good to go, that the logistics has been worked out, we've got ingress and egress from any event. Ingress and egress is, can we get police vehicles and fire vehicles and EMS vehicles into the site and get them out? That's all we're looking for. So we're actually working with you to help you succeed. So the answer's no. We don't generally turn them down. And I don't, I don't, can't recall ever having done it, as long as they comply with the police and fire requirements.
Okay. But you would have the authority to decline an application?
That's correct.
And you're stating that the, a reason that you might do that is if they were not in compliance, for example, with, working with EMS and police?
Yes, sir. Because the size of a, of a gathering of any kind depends on the land that's available. Can it be handled? Is there alcoholic beverages? We wouldn't issue permits for any place, a city park, or anything that didn't generally handle it unless so many people, so many police officers. I mean, so we, we don't have that spelled in, even in this. So in other words, this is still, from what I've seen at other cities and where I've worked, it's still very workable and allows a lot of latitude. But it would be the police department generally telling me that it's unsafe, or the fire marshal, which he's done that now, sometimes says, it's too large. And they're in those fire codes that we follow. So at that time, and again, they say it's gonna be 500, and it's 1,000, it's dangerous, there's no safe egress from the site, the fire marshal can say, cut it down, shut it.
Do we have a fire marshal?
Yes, sir. We contract with Bell County Emergency Service District Number One.
Okay. So then back to amending, I understand, Mayor, that there are opportunities to make amendments, but I would be a little bit lost unless somebody can help me figuring out how we would decipher through the bits and pieces that we've heard tonight, that people have continued to sweat concern with. Because I don't hear from this board a lot of arguments back. I heard some debates about, which I agree with, the typos, whatever, you can have your own opinion on that. But I think what they're asking for is just more clarity. And so my aim would be to ask that we try to give that to them and figure out how to do that. Can we figure out how to do that tonight or not?
I think that we can. The, the, the concerns I've heard specifically, and from more than one, is about the, who's gonna have to pay a fee for a special event? Who does that apply to?
And it's a $100, so that, yeah, so the earlier gentleman that spoke, I don't think, I don't think he, I don't think it conveyed that he understood how those fees were gonna work. My understanding that in a special event, there's a, there's one fee of $100. The exception, is there an exception if they bring food trailers into this event? I think yes.
Not for the, not for the event holder, the person who has the, the food trailer, they pay, they pay their annual fee.
Sure.
But then they don't pay another fee to get into there unless that, unless that property owner wants to offset the cost for them to have the, the special event permit.
I understand.
And they would charge them for that.
Yep. And I'm on board with that. But then another example is the, the menu, like the language about, you know, the menu. You know, is that, is that something we wanna manage, or is that something we wanna strike?
I'm not ready to dial that word. We can get rid of that, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. And then the, the language in here, as it's read, about the, about, say, a mobile vendor having to prove, is it their past three years of sales tax? Is that really something we want to make?
I want mobile food vendors to pay sales tax if you're selling in Celado. I want to be very clear. There is no two ways about that with me. So we can argue about it, but you'll be arguing to a, a brick wall on that with me.
I, I just think, you know, bandwidth at an administrative level and trying to take care of our local brick and mortar businesses, which I don't know anybody on this board that's not concerned about that. But I think reaching back three years to, I guess, Mr. Del, if I can, Mr. Delarosa, on the, on the language about the sales tax, past sales tax for a mobile food vendor, what is that for? Why, why would we want to know that? To predict what they might do in one night here, or during the Christmas stroll over three weekends or something?
Generally, I've only seen it for one or two years, not three. Something fairly current.
What if they just started today, and their first gig, if you will, is the Celado Christmas stroll?
Yes, sir. And they would provide us a copy of their, how they're registered with the State Comptroller's Office, and when that license was issued, that would tell us when they started business.
Okay. And so I would love to know how much sales they performed in the Village of Celado, assuming that they have a permit and all the things. And I would want somebody to make sure that they paid their sales tax, of course, because anybody with a business has, has to participate in that. Pardon me. I, I don't, I don't understand the reach backwards at all.
Yeah.
I would, I would, I would like the board to give some thought to that also, please, on whether we should try to manage that or not. I didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. Delarosa.
No, sir. That can be, certainly be adjusted. For example, some of the accusations that we've heard is, like vendors that would come in, mobile food vendors out of the Belton and Temple area, come here, but it would not have and didn't present to us a Village of Celado sales tax. In other words, if the sale occurred here and sales tax is being paid here. So we come across those. When we do, we do issue quite a few mobile food vendor permits. So those, that is when we get to, get to see that and request it before we issue a permit.
Okay. And then backing up one more time, please, to the special event, the $100 fee, and the approval process. I worry about, well, do we have processes outlined for anyone making application for a special event who could potentially draw a very large crowd? You define large crowd, have these bikes. To make sure that they comply? Like, how do they know what they need to do in regard to satisfying you, since you will be the person who will ultimately approve or decline? Even though the idea is to, to want to approve it unless they do not comply? How do they, how does an applicant to make sure that they have their keys and eyes squared away before they come to this building, or when they come here to make applications? So that the opportunity for you declining would not exist if they do all the things?
We will draw the, we will prepare the application in accordance with the ordinance you pass. Look, it's not very different than the state statute. It says, hey, July of next year, 2026, we're gonna relate, regulate the food industry, the mobile food industry. There's no procedure in place or application yet. That occurs after you adopt the ordinance, then we know what we can work from. We don't recreate the wheel. We actually look at what are the cities doing, look at those applications, incorporate it to merit what we need to out of our ordinance.
Okay. I understand your answer. So if we were to approve this, that part, or all of it tonight, we would then be responsible to put all of those processes in place and make them clear in black and white, so that an applicant would have every opportunity to get that right. So it's, I mean, I just, I don't know. Again, I don't know what it takes to put an event on. I've never done that. I'm sure it's quite a challenge, but, you know, unless they're just blatantly doing something illegal or what have you, I would, I would hope that they would get an approval. Those, that, those are my thoughts and questions for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Lafferty?
I have several questions. I try to break this out into vendor fees and then talk about special events. I would have preferred we kinda did one at a time rather than go back and forth, but it stretches my brain at my age, so maybe that's a good thing. On the vendor fee situation, let, let me first start and go back and ask a question to the mayor, if I, if I may. As a property owner in Celado of two commercial properties that house restaurants, am I in any way in a conflict of interest with respect to casting a vote on this matter relative to food vendors? Because it does relate somewhat to a restaurant that's here versus not. And so I, I need to ask the question. The gentleman brought that up, and I actually wondered about that tonight, is I in a position to actually vote on this, given the fact that I don't have any interest, zero interest financially in either one of those restaurants? But they are restaurants in my building that are impacted by special events, food trucks, et cetera, et cetera, both positive and negative. So I really have a question on that before I really go into the rest of it. Can I get some guidance on that?
I don't think, I believe the way it's written, he, he doesn't have to, he doesn't have a financial interest, doesn't make money off of those businesses, other than what they pay you for rent.
That is 100% correct. And only.
I think there's no.
I concur.
Yeah. Yeah. No, no conflict there.
Okay. All right. Then thank you. Then, then I'll proceed on the, on the next, on the next matter. So I'll break this out by vendor, and then I'll talk about special events a minute. Knowing that restaurant, really, a question in my mind, on my two properties, I've never really had a food vendor come ask me, nor would I, would I really grant that on top of the two restaurants that I own. Well, wouldn't allow that to, to actually happen, although there was one next door to me on the Church of Christ property this past year, which is fine, because I don't own that property. But in saying that, I think Ms. Greenfield does bring up a very good point from the standpoint of my tenants. I've certainly heard from them in the past, and I've heard from others in the past that are here 365 days a year, trying to make a living and, and have a base, home base right here. And I respect that. I mean, they're not capitalizing on the events of our volunteers and the special, special and the special, special events we have from all of our, our, our big customers here. Big, 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 a proper, well, big vendors, I should say. And I, so I do think it's, I, I do like the idea of an annual permit fee versus one. So you can come as many times as you want, but you're going to pay an upfront fee that one time initially to do that. I'm, I'm fine with that. And I'd rather do that than a one day, three day, or five day. So if you want to hold multiple events, great, we encourage more events. They help us financially, no problem. So in that respect, I, I do support the annual fee for that and I can go along with that. Something I said earlier that I, I want to reinforce is, is that we've had three ordinances in the past, which we may or may not rescind tonight and come up with a, with a, with a new plan and a new ordinance. But it genuinely bothers me to make rules and then not follow them to the extent we're not. There are always exceptions. I do understand that, but, but, and, and we, we have to be flexible to some extent on that. But on the other hand, we can't be forgiving to some and not others. And we can't enforce this process and without having at least a new start on this and saying, we are going to enforce it. How we go about doing that, I, I think that really falls to our, our city administrator and how he plans to do that. But I am concerned about the manpower and time costs with that. At some point, would like to be assured by our city administrator that, that can be done without a large incremental cost to the administrative staff we have and that we have the assurances from, from our management of the village, which is, is Mr. Delarosa, that we're going to enforce this. As I said, there's, yes, there's some discernment in that process, but I want to be assured that we are. Fair is fair and I agree with that. Business, let business compete. You know, Domino's is here. I've got no problem with Domino's. Kids eat the pizza place. Let them go. May the best man win, or both of them win, hopefully. So I, I'm okay with that. But I don't see, I, I don't see where that's a, you know, that's an issue to me. Let business compete with business. So my comments, Manny, Mr. Delarosa, you may want to address the administrative cost of it or the time constraints relative to your current administrative staff. And I'd like to hear that before I get into a position of having to vote on it. And, and I'd like some assurances from the leadership up here beside myself that we are going to enforce our ordinance if we're going to do this. And I, I feel like that's something that really needs to be understood, whether we do that privately or publicly, it doesn't matter to me. But it does matter to me to make rules we're not going to follow. And we need to be fair to our existing people here that pay taxes, sales taxes regularly and pay rent regularly and protect them to, to, to a significant extent. That's all I have to say on, on special events. I'm, this is a, a difficult one for me. I, I share a lot of the consternation, for lack of a better word, confusion, that I'm, I'm unsettled on what is and isn't in terms of a, a real special event. I think the clarification by the mayor on if that's your model of business, it's not a special event. I think that helps. I think that helps a lot of people understand it. But I'm still kind of unclear on some of the other parts of it, and I'm new to this. I haven't been working on this as long as Mayor Henry has and you have and, and Mr. McDonald. So I, I'm, I'm still a little unsettled on that. What I'm not unsettled on is the fact that I really believe on private property, that private property should not be included in a special event issue, unless, unless there is some burden being placed on our police force or undue burden on our traffic or things like that. And I highly doubt that in, in a, in a special event that's 50 to 200 people. So I, I personally have concern about, I don't have any concern about doing it on public property, Pace Parks, Arena Park, wherever we have to do it. On private property, I, I really tend to believe that that's, if it's held on property, private property and not a burden to the city, then I think we should leave them alone and let them do it. So let's see, what else did I have on that? I hold a lot of appreciation for what Celado has been in, in special events and mass gatherings are, are two very, very important issues. They bring a lot of people to this town, a lot of people. And determining that income they bring, whether it's gift shops, hotel rooms, it's restaurants, bars, all those things, it's very hard to put a metric on that. But in my view, the, the incremental income coming from the fees, the permit fees, is, is not so significant that I, I don't really, I don't think it's significant to the whole. I really don't. If we are on public property and we do have needs for special police or other things, yes, I do. So I, I would like to see the special events kind of massaged a little bit more before we get to a conclusion on that, if it's going to be included. And I, as I said, I guess my biggest concern is if it's private property, I'd like to say it's your private property. We still have rules for nuisance and drugs and disorderly conduct and the rest that we can implement even once they get on public property. So I, I think we have an opportunity to, to supervise that from that standpoint. So I said a whole lot. I think that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time and that's kind of how I feel on those two subjects. I, and the last thing I'd say is I do look forward to the mass gatherings and I do appreciate y'all separating it from the rest. I do think special events kind of folds into that if we agree to go forward with it. So one without the other is probably not realistic if we get to that point. But we'll have to look at both of them at the same time and see. Nevertheless, I appreciate y'all listening to me expound, pontificate and everything else I did. And thank you, Mayor, for my time.
Yes, sir. And I want just a, a kind of a discussion between us and publicly, if I can.
Sure.
Just not a debate, just plain devil's advocate, honestly. You told me about regulating what people can do on their private property. Have we not done that with the, with the other ordinances, historic, historic overlay? We're telling people what they can and cannot do on their private property, because it's a historical district. It's still their property. So where do we, where do we stop that? Where do we say, okay, well, we're going to say that you can't do this here, but we're going to let you go ahead and have a pop-up strip club for 24 hours on your property. It's your property, do what you want to, but not in the historic district.
Right.
You, you can't split hairs there and say, well, I can't tell you what to do on private property, but you can't do this.
Well, if we're going to do that, then we ought to abolish zoning too.
Exactly.
I mean, we should have nothing. We should be like Houston at that point and say, you can go build whatever you want, whatever day it is, and you can build 20-story building right next to Alan Sandor's beautiful home that he owns. And so you, you do have to find a line somewhere. There, there is a line in there. And I think the gentleman talked about it. Where is that line? And so I think from a public safety standpoint, the issue of 50 to 200 is a non-factor. I think the, I think the revenue associated with that is a non-factor. I, I don't think food vendors are a non-factor relative to the impact it has on existing people in this community that make their living off of the food operation that they might have. And then, you know, the mass gatherings is, is another issue that we'll deal with, which I'm glad we separated from. So I, I think you, I think you raised a good point and it's where each individual feels like they, they need to draw the line. I think that's my opinion. I really do. I, I, I would draw it right there, but other people have, obviously have their own opinion. But I do respect what she said very much and I acknowledge that.
And I'm not picking on that.
No, it's okay.
I just use that as an example. But I mean, again, if you want to, if they want to have a, if, if I want to hold, want to have a, a party at my residence, or not even residence, I'll say I own some land and I got a business on there and I sell hot dogs. But I decided, you know what, I want to bring some people in here, so I'm going to have some strippers come in for one night. And we're going to have 500 people there. Is that okay in this community? It is not. Like, they would want to hang me from a lamppost if I agreed to something like that. And you know it's true.
Yes.
Things, this, that helps regulate things like that. We know what's coming in. We know what events are coming in. Back to the, the 5Ks and 10Ks and things of that nature. We have had incidents where there was a 5K and a, I think even a 10K going on that we were not even notified of.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
To respond to those things, I want to make sure I'm clear on the issue. Utilization off-premise of a private property, i.e. for bike, bikeathons, marathons, things where they are having to principally use public facilities, to me is, is a no-go on that issue without a permit. I, I do agree with that, that if you're going to, you're going to have a party there, but after it's over, you're going to disseminate and everything's fine. But if you're going to have a bike ride, you know, through town or something, or a bikeathon, I understand that, that they may want to, if they're going to have more than 50 people, you may want to include that because they are significantly using a, a public property. And I do agree with that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor P. Kim Hirst?
Yes. No, I agree with Alderman Sandor on some of it. We got to wordsmith the special event portion, because I like to add in residential, non-residential, or parties at your residence. Add that in there also. I think I talked about that the last time.
So is removing the, or exempting?
Exempting residential.
If I have a house, a party at your house?
Right. I have a party at my house of 75 people.
I don't think it's anybody's business.
Exactly.
Now, if somebody, if the nuisance is still in there, if somebody calls, if you're being too loud, that's, we have a noise ordinance.
But exclude residential, yeah, there you go. I did like the menu. I would like to add a three-day vendor fee. Because if he's only having, what, 25% of them showing up for one day, paying 250 bucks? But 25% of them pay $25, the more have to come into town, I think. Apparently, they're going to come into town once. Isn't that what you said, sir? You had 25% of them the first time here?
It's still going to be rough to do this, but it's probably worth it. One of you said it, and I probably handled that a little bit.
That's not what you asked.
No, I was asking.
That wasn't the question, sorry.
No, I was asking how many vendors you said it's their first time here? You quoted the number earlier. I couldn't remember. The two-thirds. You said two-thirds. Oh.
Alderman Graham, you know as well as I do, you can't just scream out from an audience like that. Do you want to come and ask a question? Can you come up here? Hey, you answered his question, sir.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. No, because like the mobile vendor fee is $250. The inherent vendor peddler fee is $100, which is two separate things. But I want to add in a special event fee is 100, solicitor fee is 50.
Can we get some order, please? Let's, we're talking up here. No, if you want to talk amongst yourselves, go out, out the door out there.
Yeah, the market fee, 25 bucks for the annual fee, I think that's good. But I would like that in a three-day or a one-day pass, maybe one day for 20 bucks.
On which?
For the peddler and the mobile. Which we curve. Right. That's why I was, yeah, I think it's, it's worth a look at anyways, to add it in there. To be fair, because if they're coming in for one day and they're never coming back, why would they have to pay $250? That's what I'm looking at. Or the $100. I think that's all I have. Yes, thank you.
So you want to add language for the itinerant vendor and peddler permit fee?
We could do a one-day or a three-day.
Sir? Yeah, hang on a second.
Go ahead. Yes, either a one-day or a three-day, it doesn't matter. Do a one-day, costs 20 bucks. Three-day, costs 25. Either one, whatever we agree upon.
We would want to be careful with that math. I think we have a mathematician at the end that I'm pretty sure is about to pick this apart.
All right.
Do the three-day for 25 bucks.
And that's for peddler and mobile food vendors.
Three-day permit, 25 bucks. For what? For which one?
For both. For four and five. Then turn, vendor and the peddler fee and the annual food.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
All right. Alderman Dunch? Um, quick.
No, for, is that better, guys? All right. So with, when it gets down to the vendors, I first want to thank Mr. Delarosa for those, all the men that were here. I know you guys have put tremendous work to get us where we are today. I think, I think it was pointed out, it has come a long way as far as the work that's gone into that and it's long overdue. Are, are we taking it serious? I'm surprised. People coming in and talking business, the businesses and the publishers that have made Celado what it is today. So they should. Really, really glad with the legislation that has gone into that ordinance. Thank you, Gina. Thank you, Manny and the Alderman up here. So that's come a long way. I think that's, where I'm getting the most concern is special events. It is not clear to me, it's not clear to many of the folks that spoke tonight. It does impact, so if you're doing a fundraiser at your house and you're going to have 50 people, you got to come to the city and get 30 days' notice advance. I personally am on the Celado Community Foundation. We are doing a fundraiser at the Taylor House in a couple of weeks. There will be more than 50 people there. I'm going to have that. If this goes through, we're going to have to get a permit and pay 100 bucks to get funding to, for our own community. I have a real problem with that. Private property rights are private property rights. I just, I'm a, a big believer in it. I think this special event is completely overreaching. 50 to 200 people is not our problem. I don't think we should be talking about a special event without the mass gathering because right after this, I'm quite sure that we're going to have a discussion about mass gatherings of another ordinance. Where do you go from 50 people to 200, from 200 to 200, 500 people? Where do you go from 50 people to 200, from 200 to 200, 500 people? The big, bigger, larger events are where we have the bigger concerns. I just feel like, you know, US legislation, freedom to assemble is our right. Protection against taking away the best interest of what are our property rights is absolutely being infringed with the way this is written, in my opinion. We have ordinance in place, if things get out of control, that would fix, would, was mentioned earlier about, you know, you're gonna have strippers in, out in the streets or whatnot, that's not the case. However, we absolutely need a special events permit. We cannot have, if you are impacting public property, and you're gonna have a marathon, and you're gonna have pedestrian, people running in the streets without letting the city know ahead of time, or you're gonna put a special event and have tents, and put tents up in Pace Park and not let the city know, that is wrong. So, we absolutely need a special event. But where I am struggling is when it comes to the property rights. And if someone owns private property, and I, I was always thought, you know, you don't bring a problem to the table without a potential solution. So, I am suggesting an amendment to this ordinance in regards to special events, stating that special events held on private property shall require a permit only if the event is reasonably expected to impact public property, infrastructure, or the general welfare of the village, including but not limited to traffic disruptions, noise affecting neighboring properties, or use of public services. That, that is, to me, a, and we can wordsmith it more to work towards it, but in no way am I comfortable, at this point, approving this and without also a more discussion about a mass gathering as well, because I think, once again, our bigger issue is between 200, 2,500. And the 2,500, we already have a mass ordinance, for those that don't know, I think it was brought up earlier at the state level that already regulates when it gets above that. Our community needs something between 200, 2,500, that is, 'cause that will absolutely impact the resources of this municipality and our city. I don't have anything else, so. The special events, what do you define? Well, this is good to go. This is not reasonable. Special events held on private property shall require a permit only if the event is reasonably expected to impact public property, infrastructure, or the general welfare of the village, included but not limited to traffic disruption, noise affecting, affecting neighboring properties, or use of public services. And keep in mind, at our last Alderman meeting, we were about to vote in on, and it'll be hopefully brought up again, chapter 45, which will only really help drive the nuisance portion of, that all of us will have to adhere to, and which is already in place in all surrounding areas, and I'm surprised Salado doesn't already have it, but I was really glad to see that was on the agenda. But I did just feel that this is one that would be a good, and like I said, and I did look at, my biggest concern with my wording is in the reasonable, how do you define that? Well, I looked at the legal term of that, it's, the defined legally would be, it's about the typical prudent person would consider fair or appropriate in similar circumstances. So, there's no perfect, like, we talked about this earlier, there's no perfect ordinance or perfect, but I do feel like that is a healthy, and what I know from the surrounding areas, I have to disagree. What I have read from surrounding areas, they don't infringe on private property when it comes to special events.
So, I have some concerns about, about what you just said, and you brought it up, about reasonably expected. What I consider reasonably, and what you consider reasonably, and what she considers reasonably, could be three different.
Agreed.
But now, we still have some confusion in the way that that's written, if we were to add that language in there. So, my notes are in here, are to exclude residential requirements for special events. If I wanna hold a graduation party at my house, I don't think that's anybody's business. I wanna hold a birthday party and have, but also, there's still some, there's language in there about consign annuity, about, you know, whether you're related by marriage, 50 or 50%, 51% related by marriage, adoption, or whatever, then it doesn't apply. So, I guess I'll have 150 of them come over for a party.
Well, I mean, the other problem, and I think a lot of the business here knows this, that do events or whatnot, they, a lot of times, you don't know 30 days in advance. You can decide a particular band is available two weeks out, and then you decide to charge for it. Well, technically, the way it's written now, you should've had a permit from the city 30 days prior to that, and then you're gonna have people guaranteed coming in and seeing if you're actually charging for that and sending it in, and it's just, how do you even monitor that or know? There's multiple, multiple concerns that I have with the special events at this point. And I know my wording is not perfect, Mayor, but I think it's absolutely in a better direction than what it's currently stated, 'cause it is completely open for interpretation the way it is now.
Mayor, can I address it? Alderman Dunce? So, I think that, I appreciate all the things that you're saying, I know where you're coming from, I think, without, again, without owning a place like that, but I think using those thresholds, I think there's an argument that could be made that an event with around or up to 200 people could have those impacts on the, on the village's resources. Perhaps no different, maybe, maybe scaled down, not, not the same opportunities, or as many opportunities, but I think they still could have an impact on village's resources. I don't, I would not begin to know how to define, and you've already spoken on this, but, you know, this is, this is to my point, though, right? Like, it's everybody's point, we just can't, I don't know how to, how to fine-tune this thing and keep it tied to this agenda item tonight. I think that's the best way I can word that. Like, I don't know how to keep special events, I don't know if special events should be tied to mass gathering, I don't know if it should be, we should not be talking about special events, but we should talk. Special events might be something different, and mass gatherings might be something different. But I think that the discussion tonight has proved that it's gonna take us, I don't know, years to figure out how to define special events and, and mass gathering ordinances, and make it to where anyone could ever possibly feel like it's kosher. It's just, it's a really hard task, you know? It's really complicated, but I also think that using the thresholds that Alderman Dunce is using respectfully could, it might not seem fair, perhaps, to people who do larger events by nature, that they're, that they're being put into a different, a different area there.
Well, last Alderman meeting, I was suggesting that we move forward with having a special events ordinance that is different from the vendor ordinance, because I think we have a lot more alignment on the vendor ordinance than we do special event at this point.
We certainly do.
And then, I also think that needs to be looked at at the same time as mass gatherings, because I really feel there's this big gap, and finding what is the right number that defines you go from a special event to a mass gathering, has to be addressed at the same time, I feel. No, wait, we're, we're, public comments are finished. Go ahead. I'm done, thank you. Appreciate everyone's input tonight.
All right. I put one. I'll start from the top down, here's a whole lot of easy. Whether you're a business or profit or not-for-profit, you're still a business on the way, like the stuff to base. All right? The core difference between those two organizations is simply that a nonprofit organization provides a service to the community either the government can or will not provide based on law. All of them are included in that conversation. That's why when you say 501(c)(3), there's actually a sub-paragraph where they're all listed differently. So, for example, if you're a member of the Chamber of Commerce, right, in business, you pay your yearly fee, you technically write that off on your marketing budget because it's not a donation anymore. It's a different conversation. However, conversely, if you donate $100 to the historic society, that's a straight-up donation, you can write that off based on their charter. Nonprofit organizations don't pay taxes, but they still compete with all other for-profit organizations. So, in the common tongue, and I follow the rules of the state and the federal law side of it when it comes to taxes, they're equal to me in this conversation in the grand scope. Next part. Brick and mortar. They pay business taxes. Or that, as it was stated by the gentleman who's the co-owner of the Antigroth, which is the old Fletcher House, I believe, they pay taxes, or they pay the bill for unaccounted-for vendors, his words, not mine, and I could agree with that, based on the conversations I have with businesses in the community across the board, not just the ones walking in the community. Special event fees as a whole, how I perceive them. The fee actually allow the administration in this village to verify things that may be very well important to basically take us as a village off the hook on responsibility if we don't do those things, such as insurance, fire plan, police support, as we discussed earlier, things of that nature. I see the purpose in those fees, and the purpose of those events. I'd like to address a comment from, by name is Turnbull, regarding House Bill 3262, I believe, is the conversation. So, with that being stated, this is what I'm gonna say to you. 3262, first of all, I've read the whole thing, like, all of it, including the update. And I'll just cut to the chase on some of the basics. 3262 says you can provide exemptions, municipality, on a, on a state law. So, as long as they adopt an ordinance that is actually greater than, or in other words, if they so choose to make it a tighter fit. So, in other words, instead of 2,000, you make it 200, 500, 1,000, take it, take a number. We're allowed to do those things. So, as long as we put it in writing, and we enforce it, we can do those things. That's important, okay? The next part, occupancy has everything to do with that as well, whether, with respect, 50 people, 200 people, 500 people, and so on, same will apply. In regards to the, the state has a 2,000-person minimum for them to set the standard, that's a baseline standard. However, the comment was made respectfully that we don't, fundamentally don't have the authority to do anything about that. Well, that's actually not necessarily a correct thorough statement, because it says specifically, the Mass Gathering Act applies directly to, it doesn't apply to those inter-vehicle agreements, like, if we have an agreement with the county, for example, what they have in the event, you're things of that nature, for all of that purposes, okay? I would like to say for all organizations, and businesses, and individuals, regardless of any ordinance that we have, not just this one, if you are an individual that is requesting an exemption for a particular fee or, or an event, you have the ability to request that to the administrator. Am I saying that correctly? And if the administrator feels that it's within his authority to make that decision, he'll make that decision. In the event that the administrator says, "I don't wanna let you do that, I want you to pay the fee," hey, Mr. Delarosa, Acme Brick would like to approach the board and ask the board. Come to the board, pitch your case, we've seen it here, we've had it done here. And we're pretty good at coalescing when we, when you articulate why you need to be like. We're those folks. We're neighbors, okay? So, you can request an exemption from the board of all of them. It's that simple. Vendors. All right. Vendors regulate when, let me, let me state this properly here. All right. Comment came up earlier tonight when we talked about, do we charge a fee, a yearly fee, based on the gentleman who represents the mobile pizza, right? Pays $200, right? So, he pays this fee in simple terms. And then, let's just say that he decides to show up during the stroll or during an event that the chamber's putting on, or historicize, putting on to create fundraisers. And the comment was made, well, why does that event provider, in other words, that tip-of-the-spear provider, need to also list those individuals? I will tell you, I want you to list those people, 'cause I want you to know who's there. I think you should know who's there at your event, 'cause that helps to add to the responsibility to be the event holder of communicating with law enforcement, fire if necessary, the administration as possible. I kinda go back on the safety part of it, accountability, all right? It's not a waste of time, and it's more of a command-and-control kind of a deal. So, with respect, and I'll use Miss Hill as a good example, 'cause she has a lot of good events. It's her event. He's responsible for everybody who's working underneath her event. In the, in the, in the event, double entendre, in the event that, say, Mr. Pizza Provider is not the person who has a permit already to be here, and you show up to the event, and you say, "Oh, yeah, I got a permit." Well, we're gonna go to Miss Hill through her organization and say, "He doesn't have a permit to operate here, why let him on your side?" In simple terms. So, that's the whole point, is to check and balance it. So, I understand the value of that. And I know I'm looking at you, Alderman, but I'm actually looking all the way down the line here. All right. I'd like to address, obviously, something that came up from the community, and I'll use simpler words, but it's basically perception of impropriety from elected officials or administrations if you have a vested interest in an organization or a business, and you're up there making decisions. I understand that. That could be bothersome down the road, that could remove the validity of a decision, that could be challenged. We do have an ethical, you need to adhere to it. That's all I'll say. However, I like to talk about the strike parts that we've been talking all night on. I would like to say, if you would, Mayor, if you can do it by ticks or whatnot, the menu piece of this, if it's a food deal, I understand that. I agree with food service menu item of not micromanaging that menu, because, yes, as a food provider, as a mobile service provider, sometimes that, what you normally sell is not available, so you decide to sell something else. Okay, I'm good with that, in that aspect, okay? Now, going back to Mayor, your point of he-does or something to that effect, shoes or apparel, or anything else for that matter. If you're selling that stuff, and you're trying to set up right next to somebody else that's doing that also, who's a brick and mortar here, I'm cautious to say that regulating those individuals is fair and equitable. We don't pick winners and losers in that aspect, in other words, as a government. But what I will also say is, we have the ability to say, "Hey, you sell what Bob sells. Maybe you should sell that on the other side of town, or further enough away." So, in other words, separate the businesses a little bit. That's my way of looking at it, from a business point of view, okay? As for the three-day permit that Mayor Protem was speaking about, the only paradox that, that I see is this, and I need a clarity moment from you, Mayor Protem, and that is, I'll take a number, $25. If that, if that three-day permit is a $25 fee, is that applicable to the person selling shoes? Is that applicable to the person selling shoes? Is that the same applicable rule?
Yes, I said both.
Okay. Here's why, here, here's the why of the matter. I think we need to be really specific. I think we need to be really specific on that, and here's my point. I like to count beans a little bit from time to time. And if I was a food vendor and if I knew I can come here for the stroll over a, over a two period of a weekend, is that one event or two, by the way? See where I'm going with it? Is that a, even if you tell me it's a two-day event, I'm only gonna pay it fifty dollars to sell my pieces. No disrespect, sir, but I'm feeling you. So, my, my point to be made is, or my recommendation, Mayor Potem, is if this is what you would like to add, I would like you to look at that as a number basis because stroll is a pretty big event. It does bring a lot of positive tax impact to the community and purchases as a whole. But I think we need to look at that a little differently because somebody's going to, in my old army speak, somebody's gonna lawyer up in the barracks on you and that will quick. And you're gonna figure it out. That's all I'm saying. I'm not critical of your, your point of view, I'm just looking at it from the mass point of view, that's for the community as a whole. That's all.
Oh, so you're saying raise it up higher than?
I would say raise it up higher, right?
No, I'm game, I just see that number out there.
And I'm good with that answer too. I'm just making a statement. Back to the original point of view to address one of the members of our community that's sitting here who has music events. Back to the, you can come by and you can apply for your permit or your, or your, uh, pay your fees for this and, but you can approach the board and say, hey, look, I'm a nonprofit organization, can you work with me on this? We as a board can make a decision if we wanna work with that individual or that organization. And that applies to, again, back to all organizations for or non-for profit, period, end of sentence. We have that ability, that's our authority, that's what they voted us to do. Compromise, make it work for everybody. That's how I'm looking at it. Um, and as the part regarding exempting residential gatherings, well, in this ordinance already, it talks about family status, familial status, right? You're not gonna get a permit because a hundred and fifty of your cousins, Mayor, showed up to a graduation party. It's not gonna be required, I get that part based on the conversation, okay? But what I am speaking about is, and this is a concern for me, going back to people working, sometimes working the rules a little bit, finding that loophole, and we need to make sure we close them up as much as possible. If you're having a private family event, graduation party, Super Bowl party, Christmas party, right? You're just having a party, have a good time. I concur with the whole mind the business, none of us. However, if you're having a business event at your private property where you're raising money, you're charging the fee, you're selling something, you're auctioning something, all those things that come into play, that's a different conversation. And that's a transactional event at that point in time. I think that needs to stick on the calendar. So, I agree with the private exempt, private residential gatherings for private residential events, but not private residential business events. I'm not good with that. Because that's a loophole you're gonna get worked around, okay? And last but not least, I'm grateful for being able to have this time to talk about this because I've been taking a lot of this, you know, and listening to everybody. You're all making valid points, okay? But no matter what, I'm looking at a ordinance, gentlemen, that it's time to put it in place somewhere along the way. We owe it to the community to make it happen. So, thank you, pending your question.
Mayor, I have a question for, okay, so, I really just, I think I only have one. It's, it's, um, there's an example that Alderman Dunch spoke on a little while ago and that I have been approached by a number of people, some of which who are not owners of event places but still are asking me this question, and I don't have an answer for it. So, my question is, in the example, because you have a number of businesses in this town, we're a music friendly town, all the things that we already know, they do have to book acts, right? And sometimes I think, it's my understanding, that those acts are not just readily available because fill-in-the-blank entity is ready for them this Friday, right? So, they have to do some planning and they have to get on their calendar and that doesn't happen very quickly, um, most of the times, my understanding. And so, do you have any ideas on how we could make, you know, how do they make an application thirty days away when they don't really know what they don't know about who their act is going to be or what this event is going to be built around? If they don't know who's going to, say, be on the stage that night?
I think that's?
I don't know that I worded that well, but?
I understand what you're asking. So, notice, what if they apply for a permit for an act that they don't have and the act doesn't show up and they're like, it doesn't happen, right?
Or?
Go ahead.
They, they, they know who an act is?
Yeah.
And the act catches the fluke or has a bus accident or whatever that looks like. And then they have to switch, now all of a sudden, are they in DePaul? I mean, like, there's so many different angles, I think, that this thing could be chopped into.
I'm gonna answer that, but I believe I'm gonna go this way for it. Fair enough. Mr. Delarosa, if I apply, if somebody applies for a permit, let's, based on Alderman Sanders' conversation. ABC Company applies for a permit for, to have a music event. They know they're gonna have in between two hundred to a thousand people or so forth, right, north of that. They've already had the communication with law enforcement, fire department, they have their safety plan, the basics in place, in other words, the things that they normally would. And then their class act bows out, gets sick, something to that effect, right? And they paid that fee already. It's just a transaction at that point in time. Do they have, does the administration, important question, does the administrat, do they have the ability to come back to the administration within a period of time and say, hey, they all got sick, they canceled, I'm not having the event at all? Am I allowed to have a refund on that event fee?
Yes.
Good journey.
So, partly, uh?
Thank you, Mr. Delarosa.
Yeah, thank you. Can I, Alderman Dunch, could you help me, uh, structure this question differently?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure.
Because that, if you're talking about a major event where, let's say, you wanted to get the Oak Ridge Boys, you're not gonna tell the Oak Ridge Boys, I'm gonna get back with you in thirty days because I gotta go make sure, I have one chance to act and execute because the Oak Ridge Boys is gonna book up. So, they come through town and we're gonna get the Oak Ridge Boys here, you're gonna, which, I think y'all know, when the Oak Ridge Boys came to town, was great, great visibility for our community, great, I mean, it's kind of many people, the first time they ever came to town because they were coming to see your Oak Ridge Boys. We're gonna see more and more of that. I don't wanna miss those opportunities because we're waiting for the city to come back on a permit. I'm gonna have to get back with you. Because that, you wait another week, he's gone, he's already booked.
Mayor, the following?
Yeah, please.
I acknowledge the comment, Alderman Dunch. What I'm making the state, what I will look at this, from this point of view, if the Oak Ridge Boys get an opportunity to come to Toledo and somebody wants to have them at their venue and they wanna say, holy Toledo, they're gonna be here in thirty days or so forth and it's gonna be, maybe they're gonna be here in three weeks. It's the exception, not the rule, is the language. In other words, we're not talking about you're always late, you're always late, you're always late. What I'm looking at is, it's the exception and not the rule.
This still goes back to this is their business, their venue, their, that is their business structure. So, it's, I don't think they should have to wait to get a permit for something that is their very business model.
Such as what?
Like, what kind of permit would they need if it's their, if that's their business model? If there's a business model, they wouldn't need a permit. Tell me where that states in the, we can add that to it, but that doesn't currently state that in here.
It's in my notes to make a amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, we were all brought to it.
We've already, we all agree on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, but as stated, okay, then that's a, that's a different discussion. Okay, fair enough.
Alderman Sanders, do you have any other questions?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Unless I have any other questions, can I go off now?
No, no good. Can I? So, I, there's been a couple of things tonight that got into my ethics and I wanna clear the record. Before I took this position, I reached out to legal counsel on what I can and cannot, should or should not vote on. And as a business owner, if it's something that is directly impacting my business, then no, I will not vote for it. I have a conflict of interest. But as a whole, I am representing a good portion of the small business owners on this. There's several small business owners and property owners here. So, yes, I am part of that, so that's why, one of the reasons they voted me in and I have full right to vote. So, if anyone has issues with that, please reach out to me directly, five one two, seven two zero, eight two four six. Thank you. Alright, uh?
I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, I was gonna ask Manny if you had anything else, but if you got, if you're still talking, go ahead.
The ordinance that's reflected on the episode's ordinance is two thousand twenty-five, that's zero four for everybody's public record.
Okay, did you have something, Tim, that you wanted to say?
I wanted to clarify what a conflict of interest is, and covered it in government for thirty-eight years. Conflict of interest is when someone is in elected office and they are voting on a contract or a hiring of a government employee who's related to them via marriage or blood or they're voting on a contract that will directly affect their own business. That's a conflict of interest. It gets used a lot and misused, but that's what a conflict of interest is. It's not that you are discussing, uh, regulations which affect all businesses. It would be if you were discussing a regulation that affects only your business. Not other businesses like yours, but only your business. That's what a conflict of interest is.
Okay, Mr. Delarosa, do you have anything else you wanna add to this?
Mayor Alderman, yeah, let me, the, when it comes to a property that is properly zoned and certain properties need to be rezoned, we actually need to create a zoning for them, for like entertainment districts. And if a business has that and has, meets the parameters, right? Noise abatement, you're not creating a nuisance. And the one that we do have, we were getting noise complaints all the way across the interstate, okay? It's local retail. Tell me how music is local retail, right? We all know the answer. So, now, let's talk about Table Rock. Mr. Herman and I met. I would like to have a partnership in the future with them just because we can work together on grants. And that was something that we both discussed, along with another representative from Table Rock and Ms. Pence. The four of us discussed it. But here's what we did discuss, they're gonna build a stage and have plays. Plays don't create a lot of noise. I see, now, if you bring music out there, that may change the dynamics because you're adjacent to a residential neighborhood and if it goes late, that may create problems. As long as you create large crowds, they've got plenty of acreage to handle their vehicles. Most of your properties within the historic district cannot manage the traffic because they don't have enough parking, which it puts a burden on the city's resources because they're legally parked, parked in every direction. When things are down, down by Barton House, Rock Creek, you've seen the emails from the fire marshal, right? And what was my response? Call the police because they can't get fire trucks down through there. So, those are taxing activities that are burning our public resources. And when you only have one, maybe two officers on a busy night, when we're taking drunks down to county jail and then there's no one around. So, special events, there's only a handful of businesses that really do it. Are they properly zoned? If not, create the zoning that allows for that and put the parameters in place about how they have to manage those crowds. That we've not done. So, when it comes to the mass gathering, it is, it's the Texas Mass Gathering Act. It was designed for counties, the cities can utilize portions of it. We don't, but it's not really all written out for us. The House Bill thirty-two sixty-two took effect September one of twenty twenty-three. It happened during that legislative session. What it does allow is for cities to utilize portions of it, they can be stricter. And again, the Governor Abbott created a task force that came out out of those mass gatherings because of the loss of ten lives at an event and for that reason, created this task force and said, these, this is what the task force came out and this is what. So, what happened is now you have a standard that has not been adopted by, by law but certainly exists that you're going to be measured upon in the event that you have an incident, right? So, we've all been at some of these places and we look at how you can get people into the facility. But should you have an event, an incident, a problem, a fire, an active shooter, just something goes wrong, you can't get them out fast enough. Look at the exits. We know what we have, we've been discussing about zoning in the future, but you're not gonna address every issue and these special events, I mean, you know, it's, I think it's, it should be certainly managed to some level. Those numbers can change, it can be, you know, if you got a hundred people. But can your property handle a hundred people and where are those hundred people parking? Do you have any questions for me to solve that statement?
Uh, were you in the second? Well, I say, Manny, that's why, what I propose, if you are that business owner and you realize that you're impacting and disturbing parking and issues because you know you're parking, then you, you reasonably, I know that's a vague word and it can get into all the interpretation, but one would say that you should have asked for a permit. If you're doing a marathon and you're gonna block roads, you should go get the permit. Other, other events on your property, probably not because you're not impacting them.
And I get it in, to Mayor's point, who's gonna make that determination? Who's gonna determine it's reasonable? Is the police officer calling the chief, the chief speaking to me? Because as this ordinance is written, just like a lot of other cities, I don't go out there. I give the instructions, shut it down, issue the citation for action. Right, so, you trust your administrator and if not, there's always an appeal process, right? I am very careful about how, and if I'm gonna err, I'm gonna err on the side of caution on the air of public safety. All statutes protect the public, not the vendor, not the business owner. We protect the public.
And, I mean, nine times out of ten, we're all aware, there's certain things that Mr. Delarosa has the authority to approve, um, but just err on the side of caution. Most of the time, he flips it to us and says, this is what I'm presented with. Or if I, you know, unless I hear a majority no or yes on this, I'm gonna move in that direction and then we'll ratify it later on if necessary. So, he does, uh, he does take the precautions and that and making those decisions and speaks our recommendations. Um, but it, anything else? Alright, but this is, this is what I have for my notes. One, remove the menu review requirements. Uh, remove the sales tax, the historical sales tax supporting requirement for, uh, or was two or three years? Because there may be some that don't have any, they may be brand new. Add language to clarify who would be required to apply for a small, for a special event. Language to the effect of, you know, if you're living in a normal business operation or your business model. Uh, exclude residential requirements for special events. Add three-day permits, so if somebody doesn't wanna pay for items four and five, itinerant vendor and peddler permit fee for annual fee of a hundred dollars or the mobile food vendor permit per annual of two fifty, if all they wanna do is a three-day permit, okay? Twenty-five dollars. Um, and then for somebody saying, well, is a stroll each weekend considered a different event or is it the same, same thing? So, for something like that, that's six days. So, we would say, I had fifty written down, but I'll do forty-five, like forty-five dollars for the stroll.
Can I just say something on that, Mayor? So, before we solidify that one, that means technically we could have vendors just come in on stroll, three days, the biggest revenue generator, and do a twenty-five dollars in gain. Because a lot of the retail, it's their make or break. Just laying that out there to say, is that really fair?
No, that's what I was saying, I'd go up to fifty after looking at the dollar I need.
Fifty for a three-day?
I don't think that's the threshold.
I don't think that's the threshold, though.
I think it's.
If you're giving them a discount because they're only coming in for one event a year potentially, that's the assumption, because that's what they tell us at the time of application. But then they could play a math game and go, gosh, I made a thousand dollars this weekend in Salado. I think I'm coming back in two months at some other event, right?
I think.
And if they only do that three times, they, they, they beat the math on it. So if the number is two fifty annually, then the break needs to be a hundred dollars-ish, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, something like that. But then I think we already have math on that. No, we don't. Okay. I'm just saying, I agree with you, but I, I would hate for someone to come in and visit this place, take away from brick and mortar people, for lack of a better way of saying it, that's not pretty, but, and, and I just think the, the, the shorter permit fee probably should be discounted from two fifty, but not something that they could do four or five times and still be just now meeting the two fifty threshold.
Or you have Christmas stroll and certain events that are blocked at a higher rate because that is go, go time for this village. That is go time for a lot of the retail.
Yeah, that's a good one. That's probably the only one, right?
Well, the, 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 the Clan, Scottish Clan Festival, which is coming up, I mean, it's.
So you'd have to define Christmas stroll, the Scottish.
I just wanna do right by the businesses that are here for three hundred and sixty-five days a year versus the ones that are here for five days.
I love Mayor Protim's idea, just in challenging the math a little bit.
No, I'm good with whatever. I was just coming up with a number. I mean, we could do half and half. For the, do four at fifty and do five at one twenty-five, so three days to go to mark.
I think it should be kept at the full rate, and the vet provider organizer, if they wanna come to the board and say, hey, look, Bob's house, the pizza's gonna show up. They're coming from Cincinnati, Ohio. We invited them here. Can we get a break on their vendor fee? Simple. For that one event, for, for that event. Conversation simple. The board controls the ball on exceptions to policy. That way, we maintain the continuity that our community needs when it comes to vendors and taxes and accountability and fair competition and all the way around. And in return, the board can take at each event or each situation, and the exception to that conversation, if the vendor can show due process of why they need to have a discount. Simply put, period. How would you? I'm, I'm, and I'm not trying to be rhetorical against, against Mayor Protim. I'm not. But I'm looking at it from the big picture, and that is continuity and decision-making processes. I'd rather say, come and ask me for an exception to policy, better way of saying it, right, on that event, than say, here's a cart launch decision, and now you're gonna micromanage the funding part that you brought up and that Alderman Dutch brought up, and in return, people are gonna work the system against the community, against our known tact lawyers in the community and the process, with respect to our mobile food vendors that do this in our community. And they keep it fair amongst their competition who show up traveling too, as well, across the board. Definitely. That's how I see it.
So I like that idea. Would that be amendable to the board? That, to the mayor's point a minute ago, we, from some, you know, from time to time, we see an email where there's maybe a, a smaller action that's going to be taken. He's doing his due diligence to bring it to the board to say, this is what's going on. Unless somebody tells me not to do, unless I have a majority vote telling me not to do this, I'm gonna move forward. Or sometimes, for the record, he might say, if I, unless I have a majority vote for this, I'm not going to do this. I'm recommending not doing this. So can we do that, at least where? Because in, in your scenario, that's a most likely scenario, but it's also a little bit perfect, right? Because maybe that same food vendor's from Houston, and they don't need a long time to get here or wherever, right? And we might need that decision inside of a window of less than two weeks before the next Alderman meeting, where we might not, you know, somebody might miss it off. I may be overcomplicating this.
Well, for the, for the purpose of the conversation and for the general record, the administration has certain latitudes on making certain decisions on fees and permits and things like that. If we direct the administration that when it comes to a fee, hey, just send us an email, say, if I get three people that concur with this or don't concur with it, it'll help me make my decision at that point in time. I'm pretty certain we're all responding to those emails, okay? I think it's really easy at that point in time. And then at the end of the day, at the end of the day. At the end of, no, let me finish here. At the end of the day, what it comes down to, what it comes down to is continuity. We're not picking winners and losers at the dais. We're submitting the same rule across the board. And I think that matters too, because that might, in the same instance, deter somebody from saying, do I really wanna ask for an exception to policy? I don't wanna make a buttload of money there on this event. Do I really wanna do that? Do I wanna put my, put myself out there? That's how, from, from line and dime in that conversation. Okay? So that's one. Mayor, if you wanna recognize anybody from the community or something.
Well, I, I think that the, I don't know that it's necessary for Mr. Delarosa to reach out to us for every time that somebody asks for an exemption at some point, because if that's the case, people will play the game, and you'll have a hundred and fifty requests to, to, to say, do we get exempted? So he should have discretion to do that.
Agreed.
Because they're, they are gonna play that game. If we do that tonight and say, well, if he does that and he wants to send it to the board, then that's what we're, we can expect that for every event that comes up. So he should have the discretion to do that.
And I'm good with that, too, man.
As am I. But as a guideline, maybe, Mr. Delarosa, from your perspective, as a specific guideline, I still think there should be blockouts that may have exceptions on prime time. There's prime times that are make or break. But a normal February, January, whatever, when it's not one of the major, major events, then yeah, let, let, let him do what he needs to do. But if we have certain blockouts, I, I just wanna protect the guys, the businesses that are here three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Yep.
As do I. But I don't wanna be bombarded with emails about, look at this one, look at this other, I mean, we pay him to do a job. Let him do it.
And we don't get paid, so I, you know.
They're not paying you? We should probably.
You're getting paid.
So, so the discussion was whether, you know, Mayor Protim brought up using a different fee for a one-time. It sounds like that's probably not going to work well long-term, so it would just be a discretionary item that, that Mr. Delarosa would have the authority to make.
Place the administration's hands to make that, the decision at that point?
Yeah. And then he would even, you know, if he knew that it was hypothetically three or four months out, then he might just put it on us for them to bring it in here and make that decision. And probably, anyways, Mayor, we stop you on that, on that bullet point.
All right. So we're talking about taking out the three-day permit fee or leaving it to his?
Just leaving it at the two fifty and the hundred. I get your point. Good battle point.
But I think if somebody comes in and, and, you know, they wanna ask and say, hey, listen, we're, we're only here, we're out of whatever. We're only gonna be here for the stroll. Can we, do we have to pay the, you know, a hundred dollars or two hundred and fifty? He says, oh, you're just gonna do it for the stroll? Okay, we'll, we'll let you do it for seventy-five. But then, three weeks later, they show up and they wanna do it again, and no, now you can pay the hundred dollars.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna.
It'll be a game.
It's not gonna work well, yeah.
So we're gonna, I'll take that off then. So remove the menu review requirements, remove sales tax, historical reporting requirements. Add language to clarify who would be required to apply for a special event. When I say that, I mean the language meaning, you know, depending on what their, what their business is. If it's a, if it's a wedding, then they don't have to pull a permit, call the wedding there. Or a wedding reception, or whatever, or if it's a special event center, if that's their business model, they wouldn't have to pull a permit, correct?
Correct.
Exclude residential requirements for special events, but not for somebody who's operating a business out of their home. Let's just make that clear. That's, that's not what I'm asking to exclude. If somebody's operating a business out of their home, they, we need to know about that, and they need to pay the appropriate stuff too. And that's all I have on here. I think that touched on really all the hot button issues that have been kind of circulating over the past few weeks surrounding this, beginning item. Look, I missed something.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you go back on where we landed on vendors as far as?
Or what?
Where we landed on vendors for the three-day or scratches. So we're back to?
Hard odds annually.
Two hundred and fifty.
Itinerant, itinerary, peddler permit, or two fifty for mobile foods.
But we're empowering Manny to make exceptions, yeah.
Like if they're, if they're only here on a place for the stroll, then plus, if this is a food truck, I wouldn't expect them to pay two hundred and fifty bucks to come here and do, or I'd say for.
I would, I would, I would. To me, that was the full point of blockout is that you either, you're coming in at prime time and, no.
Guys, I don't care. I'm trying to make this easier for you all to swallow.
Understood. Yeah. So we're blocking out the stroll and Scotty's.
Okay, then, then.
I think, Mayor, if I, I think the, the, what, what Alderman Dutch and I are disagreeing with respectfully is the, the specific example for the stroll, because that's one of the worms that's here. Like, I can't speak for everybody, but I personally think that if all you're doing is coming here for the Salado stroll, which is that three weekends?
You're gonna make your own buck back.
I don't know if you are or not, but I would not come here and do that if I weren't going to, and I would be comfortable. And I'm speaking as someone who's done this, so I'm not, you know, I'm not making this up. Like, I, I like the two fifty for this. So it would have to be a different example. I think that's what we're disagreeing with. Is that correct? Yeah. So I think we're good on that, Mayor.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I was just trying to give you an option.
Yeah.
Okay. But if it's not then, the gentleman that got up and spoke about coming event at their own, that's, I know, a couple of weeks. He could come in and ask for an exception, because that's not a blockout of Christmas, that's a high bar. So that, that.
I would not have a problem with.
Neither would I. Okay.
And discretionary on, on his part, that if somebody can't, you know, if something pops up all of a sudden, you, you wanna hold a, a special event, but you don't have thirty days, then okay, then you go ahead and submit your request. I mean, that's not a, I don't think it's gonna be a hard thirty days. If, if you can put it in thirty days out, then do so. If not, okay, then we'll take it on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah. Especially if it is the event for.
But as a Board of Aldermen, do we not think we need before, because I have, my gut tells me, because the last time this was up before several of us were in office, it also include a mass gathering ordinance. I'm assuming that's gonna come up on the agenda. My issue is concern of where we're, where we're drawing the line from mass to special event and the number of people. So I just don't know how we talk about this.
And this ordinance, this ordinance outlines special events being fifty to two hundred people.
Okay. So when, when we come to, are we, so are we saying tonight, a mass gathering is two hundred plus?
We're not talking about mass gatherings tonight.
But that's my point. How do we, how do we, how do we not talk about mass gatherings and talk about special events?
We can't legally talk about mass gatherings because it's not on the agenda of mine. We're, we're deliberating on special events, not mass gatherings. Now, if you wanna put it on a future agenda item to discuss in the near future, we're all happy to do it. I see what you're saying, but we, we can't. It's not the agenda. We're gonna be violating state law, and I'm not, I don't wanna do it.
Okay.
So what's the final verdict on the, on the Christmas stroll relative to one-time fee?
I think that should be, that should be a blackout. I mean, I think.
It's a blackout.
Yeah.
A blackout, okay.
If you wanna come here only for the stroll, well, you have, you have an opportunity to make some, some good money, so you're gonna pay the permit. So with the full fee.
And I think that that's fair to local.
And hopefully, they got a, they got a permit for a year. Hopefully, they'll come back and do it a couple more times throughout the year.
Sure.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Mayor, I have a question for you.
Sure.
I know that we've closed comments from the public. Is there any way around that? There was at least one person left that had a lot of ideas specifically talking about Mrs. Katie Hill. And you asked a question a minute ago, if you missed anything. I don't know if there's anything else we're talking about, but my notes came mostly, mostly from, from her notes, so how's that work?
Did I, did we touch on everything on my list?
I was looking for, I think, Ben from the museum, and I wanted, I think, here, that's a basement, it's a gathering. I had a point about that.
Okay.
Mrs. Jones isn't here from the museum, but I'm on the board, so I don't think I'm out of line. Is the blackout including the Scottish gathering? The blackout that you were just talking about, does that include the Scottish gathering, or is it just Christmas stroll?
No, we have an agreement with, with the museum.
We, we have an agreement to which it says that they could make a request. You might recall that I said that I granted that request. The request I did not grant was the parking. It was not taken up in the contract. So in twenty twenty-six, we will take that issue up because it only addressed twenty twenty-five.
Okay. My question was just about the vendor fee for those vendors that come specifically to the gathering.
I don't remember what's with it with you.
All we're gonna do is require that Ms. Jones provide the list of the vendors.
Okay. So it's, it's not part of the blackout that you were just discussing?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we have an agreement with, with the museum.
With the museum. Okay.
For this event, for this year only.
And for those vendors that are attending the event, the Scottish event?
With the vendors, no.
No, but I mean, the part of the event is the vendors and the food trucks that the event hosts.
But she makes that request, which has already been approved, correct?
It was approved by, by staff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So we're, we're good. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I have, I have a question. I don't understand, I don't understand the dialogue right now.
So.
What is your question very specifically, and I don't, I don't understand.
My question, when y'all were discussing blackout dates of Christmas stroll, someone mentioned the Scottish gathering. And so that sent up a flare for me because those vendors only service the people that buy the tickets to come to the Scottish gathering, and the, they pay a fee to the museum. But the museum, earlier this year, Mrs. Jones came and there was a, an agreement made that between the museum and the village, and it included, like, under that umbrella was the Scottish gathering and all of that, that that entails. And so I just, I was, I was getting concerned that that blackout date included the Scottish gathering and that our vendors and food trucks that come to the Scottish gathering were going to have an additional fee levied on them.
Okay. I have a comment and then a question. So comment is, we were talking about the Christmas stroll very specifically to doing a one-time lesser fee for somebody to participate only in one, one event.
And we said no.
Right. And so my question, Mr. Delarosa, is the food vendors and any other vendors that come to the Scottish gathering, are they, are they exempt from what we're talking about tonight because that agreement has been made prior to now?
It was made in earlier part of this year, like February or March. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. I understand. Is that a one-year agreement or?
It's just for this year.
No, no, no. It renews every year if you appropriate funds. You did appropriate funds already. The, the performance metrics only address twenty twenty-five. So every year, she must submit a performance metric that gets approved by the board. We did not collect fees in twenty twenty-four, which is kind of the, what I follow for twenty twenty-five since it was a request, never acted upon, but the request is also to do other things. I mean, to utilize parking, right, along the creek area. So that was denied because it was not acted upon, and we didn't allow it last year. Well, we didn't allow it because it wasn't there last year. It was at the school, but we've not allowed anyone there. So that's why. So you'll see a new performance metric for this next year. Now, Ms. Jones did say that she only got ten thousand dollars. Actually, we allocated twenty thousand in the current fiscal year that ends tonight. So it wasn't ten thousand, Alderman. You allocate, it was allocated twenty thousand by the Board of Aldermen during this current fiscal year.
Yes, sir. I think, I think we understood that she missed both on that. Did you read it?
Was there anything else, Michelle, that, that, I tried to hit on some of the bullet points that you sent and some of the comments. So the bullet points that I, we just discussed up here with the menu requirements, all that, is okay? All right. And I guess now that I've opened that can of worms, I gotta get, get more public comments. So come, come on. Go ahead. She asked earlier, so I'm gonna let, come on up. You. Hold on, Tim. You had a question earlier. I told you, no, public comments are over, but now.
So earlier, when you were talking about the residents and how to, how do we monitor that? I know y'all were just discussing, like, do away with that permit, but parking, that's how you could kind of figure it out. Like, if a residence has a mass or a private. Like if a residence has a mass or a private event at their house and they have a hundred cars in their rows, you can't get to that house.
That's, then we call that gentleman right there and he takes care of that.
So that was my suggestion when you were talking about that. Because I've experienced that trying to pick up my son one time, couldn't even get to the house because of cars. So.
And we, I've done it driving, just driving through, doing a drive-through of the village and, and came upon that somebody was holding a, a baby shower. Great. I, I love it. But there were so many vehicles there that you couldn't, there's no way you could have driven a, a fire truck through there.
When you were talking about that, you were like, well, how do we even monitor that? Now my question is, on special events, there are certain venues here can fall under anything, right?
What's an example, ma'am?
Well, like us that are in our kind of industry, I can have a baby shower, I can have a wedding, I can have several things that are not necessarily in my business model, but kind of are in my business model. So that's why I was like, where's the wording going to be on venues like us that can kind of, that kind of fall under everything?
No. You are, food and beverage.
Okay, food and beverage. So if someone, like I, I've held baby showers there before.
I did, I did.
Would that, would that, I would have to get a permit for that now?
I mean, no, because what you're talking about is that you do rent, as part of your business, you do rent out space there.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So like for venues like us where this is part of our business model, we can kind of fly under a lot of different things.
I think that, I mean, they're accepting everything per benefit. Yeah, it is.
I mean, it is to my benefit. That's why I'm asking. That's why I'm asking, like, you know, technically I'm not an event, a wedding event, but I've had people ask, can we have their wedding there? Can we have our engagement party there? Can we have our baby shower there? And technically, does that fall under my business model? Can I do that without an event permit?
That would be up to him. Like it's gonna be on the case. Yeah, you're, you're making valid points, but it's.
Or like, you know, I've had events before there, like Bike Strikes and Brews, where motorcycles come in and have coffee, you know, beer or whatnot. Kind of part of my business model, would it be considered a special event where I need a permit?
She just said it's part of her business model, so.
But a lot, what I'm saying is my business model, it, it's a lot falls under my umbrella because of what I do.
And what I'm trying to have you understand is that's to your favor.
I know it's to my favor. I just need to know if I need to ask permission every time I'm doing something.
In the example you just gave, if I were Manny De La Rosa or the mayor, I would say no.
I think that's why some people are confused. Am I correct? Like kind of confused what you can and cannot do?
I think, you know, like the fight, the fight, I think, well, that's a margin, you know, the margin for the people. And there's kind of the rhythm, it takes the community business, but so I don't think that's a special event.
I mean, I wouldn't either, but I think that's what the confusion is because for like venues like us, that, you know what I'm saying? We technically can do a lot of different things.
I hope you still have a good account.
Right. That's just where I'm getting at. I think that's where some of the business owners are confused.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
For clarity, if you were having a motorcycle rally event where everybody was going to drink coffee and then they're going to go for a ride around the community, that's a special event. It's not a special event if a bunch of folks on motorcycles show up because you got great coffee and they want to ride their bike to your place. That's not a special event in my book.
Okay, but they're saying that, some of them are saying the opposite of what you just said. That's where the confusion is.
I'm giving a clarity moment from my point of view.
I know, but that's, I think that's where some of the confusion of the business owners are. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
He just said it was a special event and y'all were like, no, that's part of your business model.
Not what I just said, ma'am. Not even remotely.
They have two different examples.
Ma'am, I said, what I said was, if you were inviting motorcycle guys to come there and drink coffee so they can go and do a bike ride around Salado because you're sponsoring the event, that's a special event. That's what I said. If they, on the other hand, if it's just a bunch of people on motorcycles who want to come and drink coffee at your place and gather at your, at your place, that's not, that's your normal daily business, Lucy.
I know, but that was my question because I have had an event there called Bike Strikes and Brew where we did invite bikers to come over and it was a special event. Would I need to get a permit for that?
Did you just call it a special event?
I did call it a special event, but that's why we're here at this meeting is to figure out what falls under our business model and what does not.
I'm looking at it for a little value and at the end of the day, follow your business model based on what you know to be true. And then if you feel that's outside the scope of your business, in a little gray area, make a phone call and ask the question, hey, I'm going to do this. Do I need to have a permit? Yes or no? Conversation goes.
I agree, but this is, this is just kind of like what I'm talking about. A lot of businesses are going to do that and they're going to say it falls under our business and all this is not going to end up being enforced. That's kind of my point.
For, for you, ma'am, and for, and for the Board and Mayor and administration, there's going to be growing pains on questions on this no matter what and we need to accept that. We need to be able to accept it and we have to accept that there's going to be some variances in decision-making and so forth. However, at the end of the day, follow your, follow your, your business plan based on what you normally do. And if you do something super outside of that, that is something special that you don't normally do, but it's going to draw a lot of money and opportunities, make the phone call.
No, I get it. I get it. But what we're here is to help y'all make this more clearer to the business people and that's what I'm saying. It's not clear and so then it's going to be hard to enforce. That's my point.
That's why I said there's going to be growing pains and stills.
I know, but that, and that's why, I mean, we're here to dissect the fourth. I'm saying if it's not clear to the business owners, it's going to be very hard to enforce. And it's probably going to just go back to how things, business is running now and they're doing whatever they want anyway. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to help because if it's not clear, that's what's going to happen.
And every business is different and we cannot tailor an ordinance for every industry business that's on in this community.
Oh, totally get it. Just, if there's a way to make it clearer.
Yes, ma'am.
That, I mean, because that's what we're here for. And that's what I'm just like, for certain businesses, we can technically fall under. I know it benefits me. I get it benefits me. But what I'm saying is we can technically follow, follow under anything, which means we can twist it any way we want. And so that's up to y'all, how y'all want to.
But I would caution you that if, if you do that and it's determined that you did act outside of your normal business operation, we're going to fine you five hundred dollars.
I get, I get that, but if it's not clear in the ordinance, that's my point.
Again, we've got, we've been here for almost three hours now, over three hours now, and we've talked through this. Everybody has made their, different points. Now we're kind of all in agreement about some language. There is not going to be any perfect language. It's going to, it's going to make this crystal clear for everybody. It's just not going to happen. And I don't know of any law that's in effect anywhere that is, that every attorney in the country agrees what, what the interpretation is of that law.
I'm not asking you to change it. I'm just bringing it up to your attention for businesses like mine that can kind of fall under that.
Thank you.
To be aware.
All right. Anything else? Anybody else? Yeah.
On the last page? On the last page of your permitting fees, uh, the idea of charging a one-time vendor, whether it's a, an itinerant vendor or a mobile food vendor, the full rate for, uh, for them coming for one or two events is very punitive. And I say that because a lot of the discussion about why you're even collecting fees, fees is because you're losing sales tax. The village collects a one cent sales tax to, to justify the fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. A business would have to sell twenty five thousand dollars in retail sales for the village to recoup two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know of any mobile food vendor that could produce twenty five thousand dollars of food in two days at ten or twelve bucks a pop. You have on line number three on that final page, you have a solicitor's permit fee per event, which is what I think this was geared towards for the vendors that come once or twice or come for an event and it's fifty dollars. So that gets more in, into the, a little bit more reasonable than, than they only have to sell five thousand dollars of, of pizza or Hey Dudes.
But you said two hundred and fifty dollar permit, you gotta, you gotta sell two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of pizza.
No, twenty five thousand.
To make up that two fifty. Mr. Pizza Paro, is that true? Do you, do you pay, do you pay a, a vendor fee, let's say somewhere else for two hundred and fifty bucks? Do you have a, how many did you say?
What I'm saying, I don't think you heard what I said. I said, yeah, for the local sales tax, because that's been a lot of the argument that you guys have said over and over again is these guys don't pay sales tax and this is one way we can recoup some of the money lost to itinerant vendors is through these permit fees. Well, at one percent, to pay two hundred and fifty dollars in sales tax, you have to sell twenty five thousand dollars. Just take twenty five thousand and divide it by one hundred.
Sure. The, the sales tax is going to be minimal and, and I, and I didn't argue that about the, the sales taxes. That's just an added bonus. But more importantly, I want to know who's doing business in the villages of Salado. Regardless of whether we get a dollar from sales tax or we get nothing, I want to know who's here. These guys want to know who's here and we should know who's here.
Yeah. If it takes you two hundred and fifty dollars to find out who's doing business in Salado, you have really gloated your administration.
I don't know what that means, but, okay. Anybody else?
Can I come in on that?
Sure. I don't look just at the sales tax issue, although it's pretty easy to evade or minimize the amount of the sales tax they'll pay. But the profit margin, let's say is, is ten or fifteen percent. It may be a little bit higher with pizza. I'm not sure. But what, what I'm wanting to do is have protection that's been noted for our people that are here three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So I, I personally, the incremental sales tax from that is negligible. I can't argue successfully the fact about, you know, they want to know who is here. But from a profit standpoint, it's taking away the, particularly the stroll, one of the biggest profit two weekends of the entire year, if not the two biggest. So that's why I'm supportive of some restriction on the, on the food vendors coming in town. I don't want to make it.
Go ahead.
I, I would still, um, but most people that I get from the stroll, whenever I'm set up in my, my pizza truck, we set up at the Baptist church usually and we have an agreement with them, you know, that, that, that we feed their people that do the, that do the nativity. And we get the, and then they let us set up at the Baptist church out there and that's kind of the agreement we have with them. Uh, but, uh, most people that I get there, they come, say, we had to come down here and get pizza because we didn't want to wait three hours to get into the restaurant of the road. Because that, the waiting was, was that long. So that's most people I get or I get people who are just walking by going back to the truck. Because they park in the deal. So that, that's kind of what I was going to get at. It's, you know, we're not, I don't think we're taking the business away from, from the people there if there's a three-hour waiting period for them to come get something to eat. I think we're providing a service that those people aren't going to get to eat there anyway. You know, that, that there's more people than those, those businesses can handle. So.
That's a solid point. I like that point.
So that's, that's kind of what I'm saying about that, ma'am. So.
I, I, no, I, let me just respond to that.
Sure.
Um, I, I do ask questions with the pizza place on that, which is in my building. I, I have not heard that they had a three-hour wait at any time in the past. So that, that may be a, an exaggeration. The point is, yes, they're busy.
Sure.
I understand that, but they're not a hundred percent busy a hundred percent of the time either. So I don't want to take away, I'm not trying to punish the low, the, the people coming in to exploit that weekend for their own benefit. But I am saying, uh, the people here, you know, if they know they're going to have that, then they need to load up as much as they can. If they can't handle it, more power to them, more power to you. But I, I, I'm, I'm for free enterprise. I don't have a problem with it, but I, I took, I've taken exception to the three hours.
No, no. I mean, I may be.
But the profit you make, even at two hundred and fifty dollars, if you sell five thousand dollars of pizza, it's probably fifteen hundred to two thousand. That's not bad. Maybe even more than that.
I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm sitting there going, you, you profit two thousand dollars, you paid two fifty. I think you did okay.
I've been friends with Ron and he's come down and got pizza for me. He likes desserts and, you know, it's.
Well, you might be a better friend to his than me.
Yeah.
Now, fair enough.
I, I just need to add one thing on, on the, on the math offered earlier. I think, I don't want to get, no, sir, I don't want to get stuck on this because I feel like we're maybe shifting a little bit. But I think the argument really shouldn't have been a two hundred and fifty dollar one-time fee, which was what was just said, not. It's a, it's an annual fee, right? So if you came to Salado and you were selling pizza, for example, you could sell a lot of pizza. I would hope, from what little bit of nothing I know about small business, that you could sell twenty five thousand dollars or so worth of pizza, for this example, across the year in Salado, if that was your goal. So I don't, I don't, but the argument kind of really wasn't one to begin with. I think, I appreciate this point, but I, I just would love to maybe move past this. You do have good teeth, buddy.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, you do. Very good.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay. You guys have anything else? No? All right. I'm, we're moving on. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion. We want to make a motion that we approve item three A with the following amendments. Remove the menu review requirements, remove the sales tax historical reporting requirements for the permits, add language to clarify who would be required to apply for a special event and who would not, as we've already discussed for your business model, that sort of thing, and exclude residential requirements for, for special events. Except for if they're doing it as a, as a business, at their, at their house, at their residence. They're going to handle, handle that as would any, any other business. So I'm, I'm making a motion that we approve this, this ordinance with those edits as I outlined. Seconded by Alderman McDonald. Any further discussion? Question, question called by Mayor Pocham first. All in favor of approving, what item was that? What was the number?
Three A.
Three A, with the amendments that were presented, that's by the sand. Yes, Mayor? Oh, sorry.
Was it make sure we were voting specifically on the one-time or the entire ordinance, special event and?
No, this is, this is all encompassed in, in that same ordinance. Ordinance number two thousand.
Special event and?
Yes. With, with the exception, he outlined that he took notes on that. So all in favor of approving the item with the amendment specified, say yes.
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 Any opposed?
No.
The two opposed?
I said yes.
Yes, yes. Okay. That carries three to two, Mr. Donald. So three to two in favor of enacting. Alderman Sandor was yes. Alderman Hurst or Mayor Pocham Hurst was yes. Alderman McDonald was yes. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. So moved nine fifty-three.